Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love looking out at the audience and seeing so many people here, especially around the holiday time where it's so hard to get that spare time. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight as well as my committee members for changing the date. It's a little odd being here on Tuesday. So thank you to the administration also for for being willing to change. Thank you.
No problem.
So we will start off the meeting with approval of some minutes that we have. I will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of December third, two thousand and fifteen. Ad hoc
Sorry.
That's okay. Ad hoc late start time session minutes of December seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Governance session minutes of December fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as well as acceptance of Warren's twenty-four P sixteen and twenty-five V sixteen.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, tonight we have David Casson here from the, he's a student at the high school. Thank you for coming. And we would love to hear what's been going on the past couple of weeks.
These past couple of weeks, the chorus has had its concert, which went well. And actually, tonight, the band has its concert. Winter sports have started, basketball, the boys won their first opening game at Rockport last night.
That's great.
Fantastic. That's awesome.
So JV and varsity?
I'm not sure about JV. I knew varsity won.
JV did not win, but they made a noble effort.
They didn't. Okay, but they had a good fight.
Yes, they did.
That's great. And the girls
A lot of good play out there.
I believe they won.
They did. That's great. And they're playing tonight too, right?
Yes, they're playing tonight. They moved it earlier so that they wouldn't interfere with the band concert because parking is definitely going to be a challenge over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the chorus concert that I went to last week was so great. It was really amazing. Wait till you get there. It really is. They just do such a great job and the kids just look all so nice and like they're all black or they're black and white. It's just a fun way to start the winter break. Do you play an instrument or are you in chorus?
I do not, but I'm in chorus and a cappella too.
Oh, they did great. And they broke the a cappella into two?
Yes, a split group with boys and girls and then one with just girls.
Yeah, it was great.
What are they called?
Oh, Licensed to Trill.
Licensed to Trill. Yes, they were great.
How did you think of the name? Did people
I don't know. They decided their own name.
Yeah.
I wonder if they submitted and found out who was the best. But that was good. They really did a great job.
They really have. The a cappella's great.
And it was a packed house.
And then Cheryl was there, but we did a, and the preschool teachers brought their children over for the annual In fact, I posted it on my blog today, a picture. So Michael taught me how to do pictures and I'm, okay, all set. Oh, great. Oh, yeah, you're in trouble now because it's so easy to do. I'll be like posting everything. But yeah, and the senior citizens came and had their breakfast beforehand. And Heather did a wonderful job. She made like quiche, homemade, you know, hot quiche and muffins and just a very nice event. You know, we always hope more will come, but you know, it's hard. But the people who come always comment on how, and it is amazing when you see not only the chorus, but the corral and, you know, the kids all sort of surround, go up and down the aisles and just the sheer volume of the voices is really powerful and
How do the seniors get there? Is it just their own transportation?
They get on their own. They get on their own. But you know, I don't know. Maybe when we have the senior center in Pearlie, I don't know, maybe they can figure out a way to get everybody over there. I'm just not sure. But it was a beautiful day because weather can be a factor. But yeah, it would be nice to, you know, to encourage more people because the people who come really do love it.
Yeah.
And the variety of the music that the kids, and the little ones were so cute. Like when they would play, like David Shane was playing the
Oh, the drums.
He does such a good job. And you know, you could see the little kids bopping up and down in their chairs. They were so cute.
Yeah.
We did talk about maybe next year because the K and one teachers and kids really missed it. It was the first year they didn't do it. So we thought, well, you know what, maybe next year we just have to figure out how to get a bus and bring them there because, you know, it has been such a nice tradition and it is a small group when we don't have them there. Everybody was sort of in the front, but it'd be really nice to
That would be great.
Yes, if we could do that, that would be nice. And the teachers really, you know, mentioned it, that they really missed not being able to be there.
Well, we can start thinking about that.
Yeah. But the little ones, they were so good. That was long. Didn't you think that was sort of long? But they were so good. You know, they, they really, they were really, it was really impressive.
They were well behaved. That's good.
And they get to walk over. It's a big deal to go to the big school.
It's a big sale trip. They'll be there one day. They will be there sooner than we think. Right?
A blink of an eye. I was just talking, actually, I went to the girls' basketball game last night and I was looking at the families that were there, the parents, and I said, you know what, when I came here nine years ago, your kids that are fourteen years old were like
Yeah, kindergarten.
Little kids. And I said, I look at you now and thinking, oh, my gosh, you know, you're high school parents, you know? How did that happen?
They were lamenting.
We're trying to ask ourselves the same thing. Yeah, they were lamenting that. Like, where did that time go? Sometimes you don't realize it until you look back and say, wow, it wasn't that long ago. I do remember them when they were toddlers. So it was, it was a very interesting conversation.
Well, that's good. I'm glad everything's going well.
Really nice.
Good. Okay, we have special guests tonight. We have the Langella family.
Come on up. Tara and Robert, come on up.
Robert.
I know. So we're so sorry Maggie's not here because we really would love
Yeah, do you guys want to come on?
Come on up.
Okay.
Hello. Hi, Robert, come on up. Sit down. Here, sit down at the chair.
Whatever makes him comfortable. We're so happy that you're here.
Yeah, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Hi.
Hey, y'all.
He's a Robert. So this is Tara Early. I don't know if you've ever met Tara. If you haven't, you've missed out on a wonderful opportunity. Tara is one of our really truly, seriously fantastic teachers that goes way above and beyond what, you know, what the average teacher should be expected to do. She loves the kids she works with. She does, goes amazing, goes way above. But you know, she's worked out situations where she's worked with Robert and his family to have Robert have a job, which she might be able to tell you about.
Yeah.
But you know, I thought it would be really fun to have them come because there was a really nice tribute to Tara, to Maggie
Yep.
on Channel Seven, wasn't it?
Was it?
Yeah.
It was. It was Fox. It was Fox.
Yep.
And Tara, were you, were you part of having that happen?
Yes, I was part of having Robert be available for them. But basically what I did in the start of the, so I just took on the varsity field hockey position this year. So I thought bringing out one of my students to be the manager on the team, which I chose Robert, just because he's worked on his social skills and stuff. And then Maggie was a captain and she kind of took on helping Robert as well as the entire varsity and junior varsity team. And then in October, I got a phone call from Channel Seven News and they had asked if myself and Robert would be available because they were going to come to the school and not present Maggie with an award. So Robert got to be there when she was surprised, as well as his family and her family. So it was really nice and they walked the halls together and they came to, Channel Seven News came to our last field hockey game of the season to watch Robert interacting with the girls. He liked to run laps with them, right, Robert? And pick up the balls and the cones and do all that.
I'm sure they loved that.
And Robert will be going to the grand march this year as Maggie's date for the grand march. So she wanted to take him and asked Robert's mother, DeeDee, on one of our bus rides home, if he could go with her for the grand march. So, yeah, because he'll be walking with this class at graduation. So
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
It was such a nice segment.
Yes, it was. Yeah. And Robert also works at Pomodori's two days a week.
Wow, that's great.
He's working on Tuesdays and Thursdays. He works, he opens up Pomodori's for them and then he leaves around ten forty-five. But he's met some people there who know him and they have him just set up the whole restaurant and, yeah.
That's a big responsibility.
Can you look at everyone, Robert? Yeah.
He was working at Noonan's a little bit, too.
He worked at Noonan's this summer. So, yeah.
Great experience.
He's been doing a lot of different things and this is his first paid job. So he is getting paid for this work.
Is he doing with all his money? Is he doing with all your money?
Robert, are you saving all your money?
Yes.
I can't have it right now. Share with your sister, Nicole?
No.
Oh, your mom.
He's sharing with his mom.
So Robert's also working to deposit in the next couple of weeks, to start depositing his checks. So going or accessing the Georgetown community. So
That's great.
Yeah. You got a new dog. Yes. But you got a new dog? Yes, he did.
That's great.
So we're often very busy in the high school compass program.
Yes.
So, and he also does the paper recycling at the Pearlie.
He comes over and he's very busy.
He is. We keep him busy.
We're very excited.
That's the best way to be.
Yeah.
So we were so excited that, you know, I emailed Tara and I said, you know, do you think this is something that you would like to do? Because I'd love to see, you know, Robert and Maggie, you know, get recognized and Tara as well. And yeah, she said, sure, we'd love to come. She talked to us, DeeDee and Regina.
I feel bad Maggie isn't here.
I know.
She plays in the band.
I know. Well, we can get her a copy of the disc, of the tape, so she can, so she can see it. Because yes, it would have been nice to have her here, but
Robert's face lights up when I say Maggie though, right, Robert? Yeah. So that's one of the peers that he's been friends with for a very long time. Yeah.
That's really nice.
So Robert, are you going to get all dressed up for the prom?
Are you going to wear a tuxedo?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Oh, I can't wait. I go to the grand march. I'm going to have to check that out. I have to check that out. Can I get a picture with you?
Robert, can you pose?
Can I get a picture?
Oh, you're posing right now.
Oh, you've got that down.
Because he's not very shy.
No, I'm not very shy at all. Hence why bringing him here tonight was a great opportunity. Robert used to be shy when he came to Georgetown. Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Nope. So
Well, thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, Robert.
That's wonderful. I hope you have a great time.
We'll have a great time.
I'll see you at Pomodori.
Yeah, can you wave goodbye to everyone, Robert?
Bye, Robert.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you, DeeDee. Bye, goodbye, Richard.
A tree.
Yeah.
It's so nice.
Tree. Christmas tree.
Oh, Christmas tree. Now, Mac, before, before Mac's going to eat the tree.
Oh.
Okay, good night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye, everybody. Bye-bye.
Hey, bye-bye. The dog's always a good thing. Thank you for thinking about
You're welcome.
to bring that. That was very nice.
And we'll see you at the grand march. We have, we have a few other, like, groups that are going to come on through that are good examples of the kind of work that we're doing with everybody.
Yeah, that's great.
Achievement of our students.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk about anything on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
So the preschool group is here. We have Amanda Harding along with the preschool teachers.
So come on up, ladies.
We'd love to have you come on up.
I can introduce themselves too. If they can just pull some chairs. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
It's so nice that the whole team was able to make it.
This is a great team. This is a great team.
Thank you.
Very unified.
Do you want to introduce something?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thanks for having us. We're really excited to share about our program and what's going on at Pearlie. So we'll start with introductions so you know who everyone is. I'm Amanda Harding. I'm the director of the preschool and also teach the morning half-day program.
Lauren McLean, a teacher, and I teach the full-day program. Allison Regiero, and I teach the full-day program as well. I'm Sarah Hudley, and I teach one of the full-day programs. And I'm Brand Tarpie. I also teach a full-day classroom.
Jennifer Rowl, special education and greenhouse teacher.
Oh, great. So we put together a little presentation so you could get a more in-depth view of what's really going on at Pearlie. So we wanted to share our mission with you. Our mission is at our integrated preschool that is a child-oriented, developmentally appropriate program. It's designed to serve children with a wide range of disabilities as well as meet the needs of typically developing preschool students. So our staff and space, we have six teachers on our team that you see here, along with twelve paraprofessionals. Each classroom has a classroom paraprofessional and then we have some instructional pairs through Jen's greenhouse program that you'll hear a little bit more about. We have a speech and language pathologist on our team, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, and a BCBA, a board-certified behavior analyst. Within this, as you heard from the introductions, we have four full-day classrooms, one morning half-day classroom, and then our greenhouse program. And Jen's going to give you a little bit more specific information about what goes on in the greenhouse program.
The greenhouse room is a substantially separate special education preschool classroom. So we're kind of off by ourselves, but we also do a lot of inclusion time with Mrs. Tarpe's classroom. We serve students with disabilities and special needs. Currently, the program works with children diagnosed with autism, Down syndrome, visual impairments, and students with global developmental delays. All the students require a variety of interventions to meet their needs academically, developmentally, socially, as well as behaviorally. The class size is small and it's also paired with low staff to student ratios. So we have a lot of one-to-ones because they need that extra support. So that's where the twelve professionals come in. It's only six classrooms. So they are able to participate with the proper adult support in the greenhouse room where routines, schedules, and skills are modeled and practiced. This also prepares them and allows them for increased independence as they spend time in increased portions of their day in the general education classroom with Brienne's classroom. The program would not be as successful as it is without the well-trained instructional paraprofessionals that I work with and the comprehensive model that has been supported by all of the specialists that Amanda had talked about before. They're all dedicated to serving each of the students' individual needs and striving for the success of each student enrolled in a classroom.
So as you can see, there's a lot of people working on different skills within Pearlie in our preschool to meet the needs, the wide range of needs that we see of our children. And Lauren's going to talk a bit about our collaborative times once a month called preschool team meeting days that are outside of the district professional development.
So we meet monthly as a preschool team and we meet as a whole team. So that includes the six teachers and also the paraprofessionals. And we work on different team-building activities and also workshops. So we've done workshops with Michelle Verthompson, our speech and language pathologist, on our lively letters program. She came and taught us about a new language acquisition device. It's called the lamp. We've also in the past done OT workshops with Karen Hefler and Jerry Brady and worked on our team goals with sign language and other things. Have done workshops through that. We also plan together. We plan a lot of our units using our backwards design. So as a team, we decide what we want the children to learn from a unit and then we can go off and share ideas and build upon that as well. So our monthly meetings, we also collaborate with the OT and the PT and kind of see how are things going? What can we work on to improve to make our whole, our whole program better?
So let's look a bit at our preschoolers. We currently have ninety-seven students enrolled and that number will be changing since we just had some children enrolled for our January enrollment that I'll talk about. It will be up plus seven. And actually, ninety-seven, if we look at past data, I spent a little time looking at, were up about fifteen percent. So we're steadily increasing in terms of enrollment. And I think one of the places that's due to this year is that we're now accepting out-of-town families. And I know right now, we currently have some staff family members who don't live in town who are bringing their children to our program. And family members' cousins are now in the program who maybe one child lives in Georgetown, their cousin does not. So opening that up has increased our enrollment a bit. And also just the way we advertise our use of the website and use of advertising through the newspaper has increased as well. So we wanted to give you a glimpse of what a day looks like for the preschoolers. Not terribly in-depth, but enough that you know what's going on. Just kind of set the scene of what goes on on a daily basis and also comment a bit on what it's like to be at Pearlie on our own now, without the kindergarten and the first grade. We don't view that as a negative thing. We're actually excited about the opportunity of what Pearlie can be in terms of an early childhood center and what kind of expansion that could look like in the future. We do miss our peers. We miss our kindergarten and first grade teachers, of course. We miss seeing our preschoolers with us for two years and then graduate on to kindergarten and first grade and seeing what they become. We miss that piece, but we know we have a lot of collaborative work going on in the works and we're excited to work with the teachers at Pembroke in that way. So Sarah's going to give a little bit of information about kind of what's going on standards-wise and programmatically.
So with the preschool, because we do have the multi-age with the three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and five-year-olds, the standards and things that you're working on look very different for each lesson and each child. But the main things that we're working on are working on planning so that the children are able to set goals and eventually organizing themselves so that they'll be able to do those high school tasks where you have to plan things out. Working on playing to create that curiosity and exploration of things to really be able to explore more. Working on reflecting to give them questioning and have them be able to look at things in different ways and see things from different possibilities. We work on revisiting so that they're coming back to things a lot. They're exploring different avenues, finding out things that they haven't seen before and maybe looking more into that and questioning why. Why is it coming differently this time? Or why are we seeing it differently? And then connecting different experiences. Like Lauren said, we work a lot on with the unit, what things can we accomplish here and working through there to try and connect everything together so that they're able to see those experiences. We do use the Massachusetts standards for the four-year-olds and for the three-year-olds. There are two different levels of standards. However, with every student, there might be a three-year-old that's really working at a different level and there might be a four-year-old that needs some more help to kind of build them up. So each child is really unique, especially in the preschool.
So just a quick look at our day. We start with morning meeting, which some of the components of responsive, the responsive classroom program come in at that point. Community building emphasis. We start each day with a greeting. Our children are welcomed in a very friendly, community-building type of way. We have centers-based learning where we focus on hands-on, very manipulative, whole-body approach to learning. You can see children at work in a variety of very hands-on ways and also cooperative ways. Many centers are open within the classroom, the ones you would expect, math literacy, and then additional kind of fine motor, your small muscles, art activity block center where they get some more collaborative time. Also sensory table, sand table, dramatic play and that imaginative kind of sensory time. In a teacher-directed time where a teacher is instructing a lesson at a small group table. Choice playtime of a favorite of our children where they're able to engage in more child-directed time, where the expectation is not directly set for the teacher. They're able to cooperatively play with a buddy at that point and a lot of social skills are worked on. Eating at school. All the, all the children eat a snack at school. The half-day program does not stay long enough for lunch, but the full-day program obviously has a lunchtime built in. We've been working to liven up the cafeteria a bit just because that's a place where we notice that kindergarten and first grade are no longer with us. It can feel a little, a little we noticed that we're the only ones at Pearlie at that point with four classes eating. It's a large, thank you. So we've been livening it up with some student artwork at this time.
That's a great idea.
But in the cafeteria is not a working cafeteria, so the children, the preschoolers all bring their own lunches. We don't serve lunch. We still do use the library upstairs. Miss Fazio has a quaint little corner of the library that's really nice where the children still go for a book-reading time. And we also have motor group, which is an opportunity for structured gross motor activities that's run by either our occupational therapist or our physical therapist. And another favorite, outside playtime. The full-day classrooms actually get two opportunities for outside play. We really value that gross motor cooperative time and we realize how important that is to structure into their day. Some highlights just of past and kind of present and moving forward, things we're proud of and excited about. We recently in October had a family curriculum night. It was a real big change from our initial parent information night that we'd done in the past. We felt like we really wanted to bring families into Pearlie and to really show them how our curriculum and our programming comes out. And so we invited families to come in, had an opportunity for some walk-through the classroom time because now we feel like that, at that point, the classrooms, they were places they were proud of. They wanted to show mommy and daddy their spaces. And then we gathered together as a whole group. We taught a greeting and we all engaged in the greeting together. And then we set families off to many curriculum tables that were set up around our preschool hallway where they could engage with the standards, our programs, and very developmentally appropriate activities. We heard a lot of feedback that families could see our programs in action and were feeling like things they had read in the newsletters and heard about that were going on in the classroom, they could see it and be a part of it. And that was very effective. Our other focus for that evening was to be able to demonstrate very age-appropriate activities that you have the materials to be doing at home. So it doesn't need to be an actual, something you buy at Lakeshore Learning Store. It's something you already have at home that you could be implementing. So that was an exciting event for us.
It was very well attended.
It was. It was very well attended.
It was very well planned and very well attended. The people had a great time.
So these are some pictures from it.
And they, they were hoping to use the gym.
We were.
There was a conflict with the gym space. It was with the theater group, right?
It was, yeah.
And so they quickly figured it out and created the whole little set of activities up on the mezzanine.
Right.
You know, in the hallway when the gym wasn't available. So it, but actually, that was kind of cozy.
It ended up being very nice.
It was kind of a blessing in disguise.
So another highlight to make is our connection with the Georgetown High School students. So we've really been excited about some new and even stronger connections we've been making. We still are part of the intern program. We have an intern who comes over, actually, every day, which is really nice to Miss Hudley's class. And we've been working closely with the early childhood class and we have many students coming in doing observations and they're spending long chunks of time to observe students and do some classwork from their early childhood class with us. And then we had Mike Murphy's creative writing class come in just last week and I have a couple of photos from that where a group of his seniors prepared stories that they had written either using a smartboard or actual physical books at the bottom there. And the two classes joined together to be the audience for that and they loved it. Just the real connection that I could be you someday. That senior who's writing a book and sharing. And it was, it's just a connection we hope to keep up. And so this trajectory is, you know, again, something that we're developing at Pearlie that we have the opportunity to have early intervention, a playgroup once a week right within our building. And you know, we've really been fostering a stronger connection with early intervention from that playgroup, you know, and we're able to see the families who are part of early intervention, who probably will be a part of Pearlie preschool if they make that choice. And then from our preschool into kindergarten at Pembroke and what that looks like. And you know, Margaret and I have been planning some teacher collaboration opportunities with the K team. We'll be using some of our team meeting days in the spring to be working collaboratively with the kindergarten team, even to just get over there and observe what they're doing in kindergarten and to see how we can continue to be supportive of the skills that these children will be using in kindergarten. So we're very excited about that developing collaboration.
We talked about the level, you know, the accountability status. The preschool teachers made the effort at the end of their day to come over and be part of that discussion. So I think it's nice that we're, you know, this group of people as well as the Pembroke, you know, staff and administration have really wanted to maintain that connection that our public school system starts in preschool here. You know, it doesn't just start in K. It starts in preschool. So that connection, you know, and the fact that you guys were there, I thought was, was, was awesome.
And then what's coming up? We just wanted to leave you with some of the next adventures we're looking forward to. We've been working to get a sign to really kind of denote our space. That kiosk door with the brick and glass is our main entrance. And you know, we really want to kind of make our home known. So we've been working with the preschool parents group who have graciously offered to fund this and they will be, hopefully, it's nearing the end and we're almost there. So we're excited to have a small sign that will be put fixed onto the bricks next to that, that kiosk entrance. So that's an exciting thing coming up. And then January enrollment, as I had spoken about a bit at the beginning, we have seven new preschoolers joining us after the holiday break. They've been coming in. We had our first classroom orientation today. We'll have another one tomorrow where they come in in their small little group of three or four children and they meet their teacher and their classroom space. So we're excited about those seven new friends joining us. And we have a couple of children currently in our program who are adding their days, adding time to their days. So that January enrollment is exciting for us. And then our preschool orientation evening, already starting to plan for next school year. That's coming up on January twenty-first at Pearlie at six thirty. And that's an opportunity to hear details about our program for incoming parents and also to visit classrooms and meet our team. And then we have the lottery on March eighth, which will be for the following school year. So let's get to that. And we left our website at the bottom. I don't think it was on in your packet, so I apologize for that.
What's the lottery?
Write that down. So in the lottery, so what happens is that's our way of placing children for the next year and making sure that's Write that down. So in the lottery, so what happens is that's our way of um, placing children for the next year and making sure that's our placement method. So that when, if you want to be a part of our program, you come in and your name goes into a little almost bingo style um, kind of hat and we, I think, actually Carol, you're the one to pick names. And if your child's name is picked, you get to go up to the board that shows all of the openings, the current openings in preschool, and you sign up for what you want. So if you wanted Monday, Wednesday, Friday, full day, you'd sign up for the next school year.
So it gives you a choice of what you want first.
So that's how we design the placement.
But if you're currently in the program and you don't have to be part of the lottery.
If you're currently in the program, in January, you'll be getting a letter that says, you know, what choice do you want to make in terms of next year? Do you want to stay in your current placement or would you like to make an alternative choice? If you're half-day, you may choose to want to be a, in a full-day placement. So if you're currently in, you get first dibs at the placement. Um, and then we offer outsiders, new families, children who have just turned three or ready to turn three.
Is there a cap?
Class sizes? Yeah, so we keep the classes. It depends. So the class that um, Mrs. Rowl's children are included in, we keep that at fifteen. For these, the small numbers benefit her children. The full-day classes can go up to twenty. So when we have the lottery and we're prepared with all the charts and the openings, we've already done all of our homework in terms of how many, how many slots we have open. So that's kind of our, our big business going on.
So it, is it easier to get in in January if somebody wasn't chosen for the lottery for September?
The January enrollment is typically designed for children who turn three after August thirty-first, so they've missed the cutoff to come.
Okay.
Between August thirty-first or September first, basically, and December thirty-first. So they're just fresh threes. We've had some come in for classroom orientation who aren't even yet three because they're going to be three December thirtieth. So that's typically what it's designed for. We have had families who have either moved in or didn't know what they wanted to do and weren't ready to make a decision in the summer. Um, in January, it was appropriate for them at that time to join us.
Right, but typically, people who are interested get into the program?
Yes, yep.
It, it's just um, the whole lottery thing is for days.
And it's also for transparency to make sure people know how we're, how we're um,
Yeah, 'cause that used to be a problem in the past.
Placing children and where our openings are and why you didn't get if you really desire Tuesday, Thursday.
Choice of days, right, choice.
Right. Because our session choices include five full days or, or half-days. So you could come Monday through Friday. You could come three days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay. And it used to be, it used to be, if you wanted to come, so you had to pick your day. So if you were like, I, I don't know if it's still the case, so it's, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, right?
It is not the case. Yeah, it's either five pro-day, three-day, or two-day of those.
Right, right. So it used to happen is people would say, well, my work schedule, I can go Monday and Tuesday.
Right.
And so what would happen when we, when we looked at that more carefully and we talked to the teachers, it's kind of like, how do you do your curriculum in that case? Because you never quite, you might have a different group of kids every single day. So we went to the model that, that's we, we have now, which makes a lot more sense, both curriculum-wise as well as for planning. I, I know some families, you know, it's not as convenient for them because they really have certain days that they prefer. But by programmatically and curriculum-wise, we just said it, it, you know, really does need to be a, a, a little bit structured a little differently and.
Well, but I, I feel as for a public preschool, we have tons of options. I know a lot of other um, preschools. It's either like morning preschool, two days a week, or afternoon preschool.
Right.
So we have a lot of choices.
Yes.
And a lot of classes too, you know, so it is available to everybody who wants.
And it is, you know, the changing uh, times is really interesting because you know, when I first came here, we had more half-day sessions. Um, and maybe we had one full-day session. And then I remember when Pat Chick went to full day, that was a big change. Pat was always the morning and afternoon, right? It was like, yeah, it was like, wow. And now, as you can see, the demand of the parents tends to be more for full day, even if it's two full days or three full days, it tends to be. Which, you know, is just our attempt to try to be consistent with what the public needs, yeah.
And I think the other reason that transition occurred and why we continue to see that is because we have full-day kindergarten. And parents are eager to make sure that transition is a bit more seamless for their children. So they don't want their child in a two, you know, half-day, Tuesday, Thursday program and then having to make that grand transition to five full days of kindergarten. It's totally doable, but from a parent wanting to set their child up for success, I think that's why we see a lot more enrollment in the full day.
Could you speak a minute, a minute about the ha, uh, the before and after-school program?
Sure.
Because I, I think that you might be interested to see how that.
Yeah, so also within our, our school, we have a classroom designated for the before and after care. It begins, the before care program begins at seven and goes seven to nine. Um, and the staff members in that program will actually take the children right to their classes. So because they don't have that parent coming in, bringing them in as other children might, they have a train of children that kind of stop at each door and, and drop off and do that kind of arrival activity with them. And then at the end of the day, the teachers will drop off to that, that classroom space and that's open from three to six, that programming. Um, she offers breakfast um, as well as snacks in the afternoon, um, because we realize they're there for a chunk of time and need that, that break. Um, and like I said, they're in a classroom space, so they have, you know, the materials that a classroom would have. Um, you know, kind of the setup, the bathroom, so she has what she needs in that space. Um, and also use of the school.
Is that more supervise, is there structure to that or is it just kind of supervised?
Yeah, there's some structure, but um, also realizing that those times of day kind of call for a little bit of unstructure for these kids, especially in the afternoon where they've kind of held it together and been on and engaged from nine to three. Um, yeah, there is some, but um, you know, it's structured where it needs to be and unstructured where it's appropriate, so.
And if they sign up for that, do they have to sign up for seven to nine? Like, or can they drop off at eight?
So you, when you pay, you pay for that seven to nine chunk of time in the beginning, um, and you must sign up for more than two days. So you can sign up for two days, three days, four days, or five days. You can't just sign up for one day. Um, so you sign, you, what you pay for, you could drop off at seven, you could drop off at eight-thirty, and it's the same amount. In the afternoon, there is that courtesy hour, um, that's a different rate because we were finding that families just needed that extra time from three o'clock. They just couldn't make it for the pickup. So there is that courtesy hour where you can pick up um, later and you pay a different rate than the three to six rate.
How many kids take it? I mean, I know it probably varies day-to-day, but on average.
I think the max is about sixteen. Um, and it does vary day-to-day, but the max is about sixteen. It ranges from twelve to, twelve to fifteen at any given day.
Yeah, when we signed up and we did the lottery, we had a sheet that said, you know, sign up if you're interested in before and after-school care. And we, we were actually very surprised how many people. Because it is a long day. We, we debated whether or not to have it go to four-thirty, but people needed it till six. So I'm sure most of your people don't stay, your kids don't stay till six, but.
A handful, but.
There are a handful of people who do need that longer, that longer day, yes.
Is the lottery, opening it up to out-of-towners, which makes them sound like foreigners. Those people. Um, is, are they gonna be, are the, the non-Georgetown residents open to the lottery? Just because I know we were, we were talking last year about whether we were letting them in or not. Are they gonna be in at the lottery phase or are they gonna fill in holes after the lottery?
Have we talked to them?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think that um, because we opened up the extra classes, we'll have space for them to participate. So if they're already here, they would be able to choose to stay. And I think um, again, the lottery really was implemented when we didn't have as many classes and we had a long waiting list. But since we have opened up the classes and um, you know, just developed other systems, we, we generally have not had a waiting list, so therefore I don't think that we would have to limit, you know, um, residency.
And I, I feel like most of the time, people get what they want. If they want two full days or three full days or two.
Sometimes they have to wait a little, but generally speaking, somebody might drop a day and, you know, so I think everybody's trying to.
By, by August, when school starts, we rarely have a waiting list. So things do happen. People move. Things change. So it, it generally, you know, people are okay with getting what they want.
What we've done in the past too is if you go to sign up for Monday, Wednesday, Friday half-day and it happens to be full by the time your, your child's name is selected, we do allow them to make a choice, a second choice, just so they get their child into a slot. But then let us know on a waiting list, you know, that starred that says, I already signed up, but I do have a preference that it wasn't there. And so like Margaret had said, shifting goes on and we're able to call them and say, you know, your top pick came up, um, and make that movement. We have nobody on a wait, we had nobody this year on a waitlist that didn't get what they wanted.
You might be able to take one more child.
Right, exactly. We can make arrangements because we want them, yeah.
Right, so what is the, what is full capacity?
So it depends classroom by classroom. So in the full day, it's twenty, but it also takes into account the number of children on IEPs.
And remember, that's that complicated.
Right.
It's more than just twenty children because you could, you could choose Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Thursday. So that's actually two children for the five days. So that's why that's, it's always a hard answer.
Spaces are complicated, yeah.
You could have twenty students or forty.
Right.
Right, right.
Because of the sessions that they choose.
It just sounds so different from what I re, what I remember. I remember, you know, a hundred and seventy kids in the program. I remember, you know, how parents would acclimate from two days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, and then the next year would be the automatic Monday, Wednesday, Friday. That was the um, way it went. And then, you know, it just, I don't know. I, I think I'd love to see like a day.
Come on over.
Yeah, no, I would like to see it because I can't really understand it all that much, like in terms of like the lottery and.
Well, the lottery's just an event, just.
No, I know, I understand that. I just, um, are we looking to make it smaller?
No.
No, yeah, no.
No, but I'm saying like in what we were, in what we were before. I mean, like I said, you know, a hundred and seventy kids and.
Previously, I believe there was half-day AM and half-day PM where I might have, you know, those twenty kids in the morning. I could have another twenty in the afternoon.
Right.
So um, those were half-day sessions. Now where we run a full-day session, I max out at twenty for my full-day class.
So do you think that this is, it's changing? Because I think when my kids went, it seemed like more parents did not work.
Right.
And so it was more.
Absolutely.
So you're seeing more working parents.
One hundred percent, I think so.
And the need, because when I first started, we were still doing AM and PM, and now three years later, the PM session has kind of fallen to the wayside because nobody was signing up for that option because they either wanted either the morning or they wanted the full-day program. So it's just the shift in, you know, what, again, what families need and what families want.
Yeah, because it was no, like, I never heard of any for like the before school.
Right.
You know, or the after-school.
So are you ever like full to capacity? Do you turn any families away or?
We haven't. I mean, right now, we have um, some openings still, which is why our January enrollment, you know, we were able to bring in seven kids. You know, we have a handful of Monday, Wednesday, Friday openings, um, you know, and about a dozen Tuesday, Thursday openings. It's hard to kind of tell you what's open just because you could, it depends on what session you're selecting. Um, so but there are still some current openings. Um, but no, we're not filled to capacity.
Well, and the other thing too is that if a child leaves early intervention and gets put on an IEP, they're automatically. And so they don't go through the lottery, right?
Right, it's, it's like a max.
And also within our, you know, other than our planning of how we, you know, determine what classes, how, where we're maxed out, we're also embedding IEP spots for those children who do turn three or qualify mid-year or, you know, in the spring. So we need to have those spaces already available. Um, so these numbers of openings are for children who would be coming in not requiring services. Just so we're ready for those who do.
So there are other options for preschool families as well, right? So that's one of the things that we, we do know in town. So I, you know, we, we talk about, you know, how hard do you, how hard do you recruit? You know, how hard do you recruit? Um, but we definitely want to do more of that. We, we want, we'd love our programs to be at capacity. For sure. And I don't know about how this out-of-school option's going to work going forward. I mean, we haven't done that in a while. Years ago, they used to allow kids to be, to, to come in from, from out, from out of town. Because I recall when I first came here, because there was discussion about, well, are you giving spaces to those families from out of town? And what about the Georgetown families? Because at that point, we didn't have as many teachers. We only, we only had Jerry and Pat and maybe one other teacher. Right, there were.
Or Donna.
And Donna, right. So there, there weren't this many teachers, so.
Well, what, way back when, preschool was at Pembroke.
At Pembroke, I remember hearing that.
In the, the two classrooms right near the old cafeteria and uh, Pat Chick and was Jerry White?
Jerry White, yep.
And I think they had AM, PM.
Yeah.
So that was, yeah.
So you could, so you wouldn't need as many teachers if you were serving, each teacher was servicing, you know, for these kids. Right, because they have a limit to how many kids they can take as a full day.
I do like the fact that you're remaining in, in close contact with the um, K teachers, even though they're not physically in your building, because it is very important. So they're aware of, you know, it, it's nice that you can, you know, let them know how kids are doing. And that's one thing that I loved so much about the program was that they started off at three and the teachers really knew them and really followed them.
Yes.
Was interested in seeing how that child progressed. And it, it was nice. So I'm glad to see that even though you're not physically there. Um, so when you teach the half-day, so the rest of your time after that would be all administrative, like you have to. I'm sure I have a lot of things that you have to do.
Yeah, all you have to do is walk into the entrance and the signs. It's very well organized. Amanda's very organized. She and her secretary is, is new, um, Lorene. Um, so she's catching up the speed pretty quickly. Um, and Margaret is sort of the overseer and works with Amanda and um, you know, Sandy O'Connor comes and helps with the special education team meetings, but Amanda also runs some of those that um, are the annual, the annual years.
So what is Margaret's title then in relation to the preschool?
I'm still the principal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I do, I still evaluate and observe and I come over, Amanda and I meet.
So you have still a face to a lot of the, the parents, which is nice too when they go over to
Yes, exactly. Right.
Yes, the new Pembroke.
That's a good addition.
And she also came to our curriculum night as well, so she's been a part of a lot of our.
Acting, yeah. That's good.
And I know you spoke to that connection just the other week. Margaret came in to formally observe a lesson of mine. And after we had the opportunity to talk and, you know, not only linking, you know, how can we help the individual kids move up, but Margaret kind of connected me to some of what's going on in the K curriculum and how that links to the lesson that I was doing. So that was insightful for me to have Margaret there as that link between the two schools.
Yeah, right.
So that's another way that we can keep in touch, yeah, and, and do our job to pass along strong students to the Pembroke School.
Right. No, that's great. So who's been there the longest, other than Amanda?
Amanda, yeah, Amanda is, so I.
Then I guess I'm.
Jen.
No, I'm Jen.
One, so how, so how many years?
So how many years?
Three years now.
Three years. So then, yeah, three years, the three, they all started at the same time.
Okay. And then you two were.
This is my second year.
Yeah, this is my first year.
And did you come right out of college?
Um, I came out of grad school. Um, so I had worked in other settings previously. I actually covered for Mrs. Harding's um, maternity leave last year and then was um, put on for this year, so.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
That's good. It's a nice little home that you have.
It is, it is. Special spot on there.
Beautiful little program. That's great.
And their little sign they've designed is, is, it mirrors the bigger Pearlie Elementary sign, so it's like the same kind of sh- shape and the same color.
Color lettering and, so we want to put that right up there to designate the, the area.
Yeah, I, I loved the way that was designed in a similar way to the main sign.
Yeah, that's good.
And they actually park out back. So we're, we're working currently on the parking with the, you know, when we have the senior center and they came up with that idea that wouldn't it make more sense to have people out back that are stationary all day? Than, you know, people sort of moving, you know, driving their cars around that road. So their staff parks out back now and we still have the drop-off.
So then how do you gain access then? Do you go through the cap or do you walk around?
We go side.
Yeah, there's a side door.
Actually, that side door, if you, if you, that parking out there, that fob they have in the side door walks right into the preschool hallway.
That's great. Oh, right, yeah.
Walks right into the preschool hallway.
Yeah.
It's kind of using all the space too, which is nice.
Yes, it is using all the space.
So just on a different note, what are your thoughts on the senior center? Moving into your space? It sounds like there will be a good opportunity to have uh, you know, some seniors and the, and the kids work together and.
Yeah, we're excited about that. Um, I think, you know, it will take some planning in terms of how we're going to use the spaces and I think that'll be coming up, yeah. Um, you know, kind of working through spaces that we must use so that we cafeteria together, but I think there's some easy workable solutions. We're a small group. Um, you know, even as we expand a bit, so um, it's easy to work through.
Oh, good. Think it'll be a good relationship.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, they were together the other day.
Yeah, performance, yeah, it's right.
Yes, that's true, yeah.
That's great. Well, I wish you much success with the program.
Well, thank you for having us.
I know, I appreciate, I really do appreciate you coming out because I know how busy it is. This time, you have to even get away from shopping.
We hadn't, we hadn't had you in before, yeah. I know, this was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're glad to let you know what's going on there.
Absolutely.
We'll have you come in again.
Yeah.
And you know, if you wanna, if you wanna set up something where people want to come in and take a walk through someday, we can definitely make a little, do on a little field trip. And I'm sure they would be very happy to have us. That would be fun. Okay, so let's plan to do that. We'll set something up, Amanda, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That was nice.
Okay, um. We, I know, it's hot. Is it a little warm in here tonight?
Probably not to Margaret.
She's already, she's still wearing a coat anymore.
Is it warm? Are you warm tonight?
Margaret's the bright.
I'm in heaven.
Yeah. But it's hot in here.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. I've got a sweater.
You are?
Man, I'm cold.
So the next, uh, we're going to discuss the accountability report?
Yep, we can just discuss the accountability.
Okay, so Julie's gonna come on up?
So come on up, Jules. So we have a few things that, you know, we'll use to discuss this accountability. Okay, so let me just catch my.
I wish these things were bigger.
Don't you? I tell you what, I don't know what they're thinking. They, they, you have to have very young eyes too. Hi, Margaret. So, so Julie, on the table, I gave them a copy of the letter that I wrote. So this letter.
Yeah.
Um, is posted on our website. It's both on the front page and the Carol's corner. Um, it discusses how parents could actually go online and look at it in real time. Um, but it also, they, they'll also get a hard copy of the, of the backup information. Now, it's, it's a little complicated, a little hard to read, so I'm not sure how, you know, how helpful.
So, you sent the letter or the whole packet out?
Well, we're gonna send the whole packet out. But the letter right now is on, I posted the letter and I posted the, the link uh, to both the district accountability and the school accountability. Okay, so this is all on there. And it lets parents know about the um parent session that we're going to have on the twentieth. Um, and it certainly invite anybody, but if people have questions in the meantime, you know, I don't, I don't want anybody to panic about this. You know, it is not, it is not the level we wanna be at, so for the purpose of the public that doesn't know what we're talking about. The state every year sets up an accountability rating and it's based on, um, the students all together and then the various subgroups. And it is based on MCAS performance. Um, because the state is sort of teetering between sort of two kind of assessments, they did spend, I, I got some information today in talking to the, to the state, that they did a crosswalk. So even though they are two tests, two different tests, they figured out a way to mathematically do a crosswalk so that they feel that the accountability rating for, for both, for both groups would be comparable. So we were, we were wondering if the, a comparison to Georgetown as an MCAS district was going to be only to MCAS districts. And the answer I got today is no. It is all the districts in the state, the hold harmless, if you took Park, when they say you were held harmless, you still got results. You got results for your full, all your students as a group and you got results for your subgroups. But if you, if your results of that, of those tests would have dropped you from a level two to a level three, that didn't happen to you because the test was a different test, okay? So that's what hold harmless means. Okay, so when we got our results this year, um, level, high school was level one, which it's been consistent. Level one is the best, level five is the most challenging. High school was level one, the middle school was level two. And for the first time this time, the Pembroke was level three, but becau- not because the performance of the students overall was poor. It was just that the group of kids in the hu- what they call the high needs subgroup did not meet the state target. In fact, when we look at the accountability report, you'll see that they declined by six point eight points. So when I met with the accountability gentleman, he said, that was your problem. And so they have a threshold for a percentile where you have to fall. And we fell in the seventeenth percentile and we needed to be in the twentieth.
For growth.
Well, we, that's how, well, yes, cause the whole goal of these accountability is to show that you're narrowing the proficiency gap. So they give you a certain target that you have to hit, right? And then they tell you, as you'll see in here, did you meet it? Did you, did you decline? Was there no change? Whatever. And the fact that the subgroup for special education, which is included in the high needs group, declined instead of made the progress that they had, were expected to make. They were flagged and that caused the, the level three designation. So today, I think I told you, um, in a subsequent, I, I talked, uh, at some length with a gentleman named David Troughton, who is the Northeast Regional DSAC, which is, I forgot to ask him what that meant. But it's a, it's a, it's a.
District and School Assistance.
Assistant Center or something like that, right?
Yeah.
What is that?
We've been reading on. District Center for School Accountability.
There we go, District Center for School Accountability. So they work with level three, level four and level five districts and they have a, a number of resources that are available. He told me that we sort of fall into the category similar to two schools that he thinks of that are elementary schools that have a level three designation. One is in Reading and, you know, he said, like Georgetown, that has a great school district with a lot of great things going on. Reading is, falls into that same category, but they have one school there that, because of the subgroup. It's the same sp- subgroup. The other was the Horace Mann School in Melrose. And again, Melrose, it's felt same into that, that special ed subgroup. So they have had, were, they've worked with a number of school districts throughout the state and all of them have made increases and in some cases within a year, have gotten out of the level three status. So he said, Carol, very workable situation, you know, we, we know, given all the things that I told him we were working on, he said, we can help you and, you know, we're interested in working with you.
Do you know what school that was in Reading?
I do, it's the Joshua Eaton School.
You're kidding?
Nope.
The Joshua Eaton School was always the best school in that district.
But that, that's what can happen to you. It, it literally, literally can be one year where you don't hit those performance targets. Now, once you dig yourself a little bit of a hole, it's a little hard to, like, we, we figured we would have to have a ten point increase this next year and the year after to sort of get to where that original state waiver wanted us to be. But I'm convinced that if we narrow the gap significantly, that's gonna, that's gonna be what they're looking for, right?
And you're saying this can be done in a year?
Well, some places it is done in a year, some places it takes a little bit more than that. But he was very proud of the fact that, uh, he said, he said, la- this last year, five schools came out of what he called status. Um, so there, there, there definitely are things that, that the DSAC can do to, to help resources. So one of the things he said is right after the holidays, he has a team of people. He, they have, um, they have somebody they call a support facilitator, which he already told me who that would be. Um, they have a full, they have a full-time math specialist at the DSAC, a full-time reading specialist and a full-time data specialist. And he, those people will be part of the team that comes in and works with our team. So he wants to say, he's gonna get in touch with them to find out first couple of weeks of January, when they might have their time available and then we will have to do our doodle and figure out how, how we can figure out one of those times.
And this is all state that the state funds?
This is all state, this is all state funded, yep.
And it's just because we fell into.
That's right.
This category. Well, let me just go back, let me ask you, so he specifically mentioned the Reading District and the Melrose District. Now, when I look at the accountability online, when I go and, and I look and I see level one, level three, level four schools.
Yep.
Is he, is he comparing like these two districts, saying, okay, these are similar to yours because it was the, the special ed subgroup? So when I'm looking at, say, Quincy, that's level three, so what he's, he's, he didn't specify that. So he, the other ones are more detailed, which next to, you know, the level, it gives a brief explanation.
Right, and remember, it's not one size fits all. So they look at tho- what those targets were, right? So it's, it's not just, we're all hitting a, a defined target. They're looking at growth, they're looking at narrowing the gap. So that looks different. They have a very complicated, what I, what was clear to me from the conversation I had with the accountability guy the other, the, the time I did, it's a complicated formula. We're not gonna figure out, you know, but he said to me, I just want you to know, there are two schools that I, we're working with that are level three for that subgroup and these are schools that we think are kind of comparable to sort of, you know, Georgetown and, and, and what we, so we think that together we can all kind of approach, you know, this situation.
So they work with the teachers or the students?
Well, they work, that's what, what's with the team will, generally speaking, they work with the teachers and the, and the, and the administrative group. Um, and so I don't know yet exactly what they would do to help us, but the, the first step would be to, um, have them come in, have a meeting with our team, right? And then maybe they'd set up something. I know they have a, a gentleman, um, who's their full-time data specialist, the Steve Bogdanoff. And he's going to contact Steve and Steve's gonna send us a little contract that basically gives us that, give, gives them permission to look at our stuff in the security portal, cause they can't just go in.
So he would, he would look through everything and kind of.
He would look through our data, right, and see if, if there's things he sees. And then he would work with us and look at what we've done already to look at, you know, the data we have available and, you know, the goal is to try to just, you know, and it, they do do some things, they can work with teachers, but they'll, they'll let us know what the range is once they know kind of what we, what we're interested in having. Um, but I think it's kind of exciting that, you know, some external people come in for support. It, you know, it's not coming in to say you're not doing it right, it's coming in to, you know, to support.
Coming in for more new information to help us, yeah.
And these are, these are people who've worked with a lot of schools and, you know, have, have seen, you know, kind of some, some strategies that maybe, you know, we haven't thought of yet, or maybe they can just help us look at the strategies we're using in a different way.
But do we, do we know where it fell apart, like so that?
Right. So let's, so let's look at the results a little bit.
Let me just ask my question before we go to the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbie, I thought you had a question.
The question that I had is, it seems like they're so supportive now that we're in this predicament. Where, was there any support prior to, you know, like saying there could be an issue coming up and we're gonna support you to try and make it so that you don't get to level three?
No. No, because they, no, because they, no, because they assume, based on what they're seeing from the state result, if you're a level two, level one and level two, that, that, that it's working, it's not, it's, there's not a concern. So, I mean, this, somebody asked, one, one of you guys asked me, you know, were we surprised by this? We were surprised that we were in level three, you know, we, we knew because everybody, this subgroup struggles everywhere for a lot of reasons, right? But for whatever reason, we fell because it was a six point eight point draw and they wanted us to make a seven point game. That's a pretty big delta, right? So.
But that's what I'm saying, we must have known that that was our target.
We, we have known it's been our target, but we didn't expect it to drop us that low. The guy said to me, when I talked to him, he said, if, if the, if the performance hadn't been that low, that particular year hadn't been that low, you wouldn't have fallen into level three. But it was that year, for whatever reason, and we don't, we don't know the reason. We're gonna dissect, you know, things more carefully. We've already gotten some information from the teachers as to what they think might be going on. You know, we're meeting on Monday again for most of the day to really get grounded more in that data. Margaret's already got a number of things that her staff has been working on. It's really, we think that there is need, we can, we need to coordinate things a little bit more. We, we don't quite know the disconnect, yeah.
But i- i- is these growth targets that the state has given us based on our past performance? Because I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. I, I have this, this PPI index high needs and Georgetown here is at sixty-four. Okay, so we're at level three. This is just the high needs, PPI index. Um, I don't know, I think I pulled it off the DOE. Uh, and like another town, Danvers is forty-one. So they, their PPI, they, but they're still level two. How come they're so much lower than us?
See, that's what I'm trying to say to you.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
It's a complicated formula, so it doesn't translate.
Yeah, so everybody is held to different.
Right, so if we look through this report, since we can see them because they're microscopic, you can, you can see that when we go through this, that there were performance targets. So, so Julie, let's start with, Barbie, are you, is your question answered?
So that was one of my questions, uh, uh, the next one is, I'm concerned about the teachers, like the teachers already are so. Uh, they already have so much going on during the day. How, and then this on top of it, then we're gonna have these individuals come in to work with the teachers?
I, I don't know if they would come in to work with the teachers as much as work with, with us to, again, you know, figure out how we.
Right, but then how are you gonna convey it to the teachers that work with these kids that need to?
Sort of, so that's the problem. We don't know what the possibilities are gonna be, right? So we are not gonna stress our teachers anymore. This is a support process for them.
And teachers, we, in our meetings and.
No, and I'm just asking that question because you had said they're coming and they'll talk to the administration and.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they, no, my understanding is that they have.
So I'm just saying, where is it, how will this happen?
Well, well, cause there are, there are, well, it depends, right?
During the day?
So there could be time during the day, there could be opportunities after school. I just don't know because that he's, when I asked him today, well, what kind of things have you done in the past with districts?
Is the fire alarm?
Is that, is there an alarm going off?
It's not going off.
Okay.
Fire is below.
Cause that's, that's confidence firing, right?
He had said, sometimes we come in and we help the teachers look at the data, sometimes we, you know, we, we take a look at the subgroup. So I, I think it really, and we have teachers on our team, we have, you know, our Maureen and Kate and, and John, you know, so. I, I think we, we get, the good news here is we get to structure how we think it's gonna be most useful. And, and you're right, we don't want the teachers to feel any more stress than they already feel. And the conversation we're gonna have later about Park and MCAS is probably part of the stress they're feeling right now too, so that, we're gonna resolve that too. But I think that it's, it's just, sometimes it is helpful to have somebody else, you know, come in and, you know, sort of supportively take a look at what you're doing together and say, well, these are some strategies that, you know, maybe some other places have used and, you know, the teachers are, um, we've been getting some very insightful. I, I put it in here for you so you can see that we, we had a little questionnaire. And some of the teachers right away filled it out, other teachers.
Is that, are you asking that everybody provides it to you?
We asked everybody. Well, I mean, we, I mean, we.
I'm collecting them.
Yes, Margaret is, but most people are.
You know, we didn't say to them, you know, we wanted, we were more interested in people giving us the information than being concerned if their name was on it. So we asked for their name, but most probably didn't give their name, although many did.
Yeah, most, yeah.
And, and Margaret's keeping a sort of a little tally about what we're hearing from, from a lot of people. But I think we've all been reading them a very insightful, you know, thinking on their part. And I didn't hear one teacher, you know, like complain that, you know, this isn't fair or, you know, I mean, hey, you know, some people were sur- surprised, very surprised. Some people were not so surprised. Some people were disappointed because they felt that, you know, for all the hard work they do, they would have thought the results would have been better. What else? Was there anything?
I mean, it's just a wide range of emotions, I think, in a situation like that. It's trying to figure out how does that impact me and, and how do I respond to this question, you know?
Have you gotten any parent, um, calls or anything?
No, this is the, don't, because this is the first that people are hearing about.
Yeah, we didn't have time.
They, you know, so, so that's why we, you know, we will, we will do our best to answer any questions. That's why we wanna have a parent session. Um, at the end of January, it'll be actually good timing because we'll have had a chance to, you know, kind of work with the DSAC a little bit and we'll have had a chance to really work on what our plan, you know, solidify our plan. So, um, we, we don't want anybody to panic. So we have a level one, a level two, a level three school for the subgroup. And the overall district is a level three because in this kind, this accountability system, for whatever reason, hey, Mike, for whatever reason, they, they just take the performance of the lowest performing school, so they don't do an average and say, well, gee, you know, got a one, a two and a three, it's good too. They, they don't do that. So again, I, I don't want people to panic about this, you know? We do feel that this situation, it, we got well over eighty percent of the kids in the top two categories. You know, we have a number of kids that are in needs improvement that, you know, we keep moving forward with them. We have some plans to put back in the after school program again, cause that was very successful with the people who did it. But this purpose of tonight, as much as we can, is to make sure you're understanding how to read the reports and, you know, what the highlights are. And then we're gonna take all the information and continue to work on, you know, getting the action plan that we'll bring, that we'll bring forward to you.
In, from the, the action plan perspective, I know you said we get to put it together. Does it need to be approved or vetted or whatever? Or is that purely our, our exercise? Our, our plan that we work out by the end of January?
No, that, that's our plan, that's our plan.
So that doesn't require any?
It doesn't re- It doesn't require, in fact, to tell you the truth, I have not heard anything from anyone from the state. The, we're all doing this because I knew the resource was available. I'm sure if you're a level four and a level five district, you've heard from the state, but.
Well, the the other thing, we will be adding a goal to the school improvement plan, so that will, I will work on that with um the council. And then, again, bring it before you for that final approval. So I think, you know, in that respect, you'll be a part of that decision.
There are three hundred districts and schools in level three statewide.
How many districts are in the state?
Three hundred and seventy-three or fifty, is that somewhere in that?
Three hundred.
So there's three hundred schools or districts, so it's not.
There are districts without schools.
That's right, there is, so there, like in our case, you know, yeah.
Say three hundred and sixty.
So they said they're about three hundred, that's what I heard the other day when I went to that session, it's about three hundred. So.
Can I ask one more question before we start? The, and this starts going to the the questionnaire and and I don't mean it, I know you haven't totally gone through it. Indeed, the folks that sort of said that they weren't surprised, did they have reasons that they weren't surprised that sort of said, maybe we could have caught it? That's a weird way of asking the question, but if, like, was there a, oh wait, like, clearly they thought something was up.
Well, again, when we're looking at, we're we're looking at the subgroup, so many teachers are looking at, in some of the areas. That we're, they're working on, some of that is not a mystery, you know, when we're looking at collaboration, when, you know, we're looking at IEPs or service models. So, these are things that, it, they're, they're, um, they're right in it, they're in the middle of it. So that, I think that's why they're saying it's not a surprise to them, because we're, we're working on to improve it already. I mean, and that's, that's the other part of it, we had already been proactively putting things in place based on data from last year. So that's why when we're looking at the resources that the state offers, we're, we've already started doing much of what they would suggest to do. So we were moving in that direction, so I think some of that, teachers understand that, and that's why, to many, that's not a surprise, because we're already working on some of those things.
They also know the MCAS, usually they know the MCAS test well enough, and they know that if there are certain kids that have a certain level of reading ability. That they're going to struggle.
So that's just one of the other, the other reasons to keep MCAS, which we'll be talking about later.
Yes, we will. Um, yeah, it it doesn't really matter, I mean, if you're reading below grade level, you're gonna struggle. But at the same time, you know, I I agree, I think that we, everybody's looking at their special ed subgroup. But our, for whatever reason, that particular year, our scores were, the number of points we fell triggered. Um, were below the threshold that they were, you know, they were looking at for what constitutes a drop in level.
So, and they put it all together, grade three, four, five, it was all.
Yeah, they do, they do, they do, yep, they do.
So then we have to take that and unclump it, right? So it's, they use their own category for, you know, consolidation of data. And then we have to pretty much disaggregate it all, which is what we're doing at this point, is trend data, looking at trend data. So figuring out, you know, how do you take this kind of report, go back into the standards and all those reports, combine almost our own PPI scale? How do you combine all that and then figure out what is regular ed versus special ed look like in in everyday life in school? And how, how do we know where our targets are for growth on both ends? Because even in this data, like, they're doing trend data too, but it's different because you see it along an accountability line. But they're doing it against a lot of, against how a subgroup performs within the school district and then against the state subgroup. So it's, they have their own tricky formula in terms of figuring out what's the aggregate, meaning everybody, versus what's the. What's the subgroup versus everybody and the subgroup, do you see what I mean? So it is a pretty tricky calculation. Um, I will say, I I am looking forward to meeting with the data people, because I'd like to hear.
And that's why you need the data person to figure it out.
I really, they have, they have their own data people, that creates the PPI scale, so it's always helpful to hear from the source, how that transpires.
So which one of these are we gonna take a look at?
So I do see, I do see a problem, because, okay, so you, here's what you have, you have the parent letter and then you have, um, the district.
So you have the district information in front of you?
Right.
This is the district, the separate one or?
One, no, the separate one is Pembroke.
Okay.
So if we, so.
I think we should look at the Pembroke one.
I know, the problem is, this is why they have a problem, because what they have in their packet is the front sheet only of that.
Oh, okay, and I, and I have the, the, uh, the, the detailed data.
Yeah, so I'm wondering what the best thing to do about that is, Julie, if, is the best thing to have, have Julie. Um, go through the numbers and then what we'll do is we'll get you those reports so that you can actually physically look at them yourself. Since right now I don't know how we'll get copies of the subgroup stuff for you. I know it's hard when you have something in front of you.
Right.
Doesn't this have the subgroup stuff here?
No, yes, but that's.
So we just have the face page and not all the corresponding.
You don't have all the, the second.
So what would be your pleasure about that? Would you rather, I mean. I mean, Julie can't, there's only a little bit of information on the subgroups that we can focus on those subgroups, just for their conversation. And then if we need to have a more detailed conversation about this at our next meeting, we can certainly do that. Right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
We could try to put, if I can get Wes to help me project it.
If you have, do you have a project, do we have a computer?
So we'll, we'll, we'll try to bring it up, projection wise, then you'll be able to.
Okay, that'd be great, cause we can talk to Mike while you're doing that.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Okay, that would be better.
Great, I just.
I I just thought of it.
Okay, so, um, we'll have Mike Farrell come up and we're gonna talk about the, um, senior center. The, uh, method of underst- the memo of understanding, um, and the pretty helicoded. Map that you have. Thanks for coming.
You're very welcome. We don't have enough for everybody.
That's all right, no worries.
We can share.
I I already got a copy of that.
And I just had an eye test about four o'clock and I, the lights are really bright.
He can't drive anyways. He already, he already told us he can't see the the lights.
Oh, they're very bright though, that, that, I think I can see them tonight.
Oh, that's because of these colored ones.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're extremely bright.
Well, you had your, uh.
Here's an extra one.
Okay, thank you.
Was this the same what we have here in the packet?
No, I think he had.
He's gonna make it, he's gonna make it.
There's just two s- important but slight, um, modifications on that, from when we met last week. Um, and this, uh, the selectmen met last night and discussed the MOU. And they, they actually made a couple, uh, suggestions for changes. And, uh, some of those changes were based on conversations that Barbie had with Phil offline. But he brought them to the, uh, the board meeting last night and, uh, there were. Three, three issues, uh, that Barbie and Phil talked about. One was the, um. The offices and why are they being built with full walls? Uh, the other one was what happens with those full walls if the, um. Schools, uh, the, the school committee needs to.
Reuse it as a.
Use those as classrooms. And, um. So tho- those were the, the, the two major issues. Um, the, the answer to the, why are the, uh, the full walls is, is pretty simple. It's code, building code. Uh, we have to build those offices to school building codes. And that means they have to, we can't have half partitions, they have to be full walls tied to the ceiling. Uh, tied to the infrastructure of the, of the ceiling. And then they have to have, uh, basically, uh, the two-hour walls, uh, double. Uh, sheet rock and, um, because, because it's a school. Uh, regular, um, commercial construction doesn't require that. But the, the, uh, because of the fact that it's a school building, we have to meet those codes. In, in putting those offices in there. Uh, what we would do with them, if it reverts back to the, uh, classroom style. Uh, the town, and I, um, put a section in here, it's in section seven. And it's a new section F.
Okay, on page three?
Yes. Return of classroom spaces. This is under the obligations of the town, number seven. And it simply says, if future increases in the school district enrollment necessitates a need for additional classroom space. At Pearlie School, the town will return the remodeled office space to pre-senior center configuration and no cost to the school district.
Now, Mike, would that keep it as that's the only reason because of, uh, you know, an, uh, enrollment issue? Like, say, um, you know, sometimes there's, some schools have like the, you know, temporary, uh, mobile.
The partitions.
No, like the actual trailers that that come on, like, you know, for different reasons, whether there's a problem with. There's a reason why they had to re, you know, remove them from the actual building. So are we saying that if it's just for enrollment purposes? If we need those spaces back?
Well, if we remember, in term, in terms of termination language, in the con, it says, this agreement may be terminated anytime prior to expiration, blah, blah, blah. Uh, increased enrollment or unforeseen emergencies, so maybe we should just use the same language. Remember, cause I think the unforeseen emergencies we were talking about were exactly what Barbie's talking about, like, something happens and all of a sudden we've got a, the high school floods and we can't be there. You know, then, you know, and we know a year in advance we're gonna have to.
Move trailers in and we knew that they, yeah.
That's what we talked about at the meeting, I remember.
I just, the fact that it says enrollment, I don't want that to be the only reason. But I do like the, the terminology and the termination, I, I agree with the superintendent that it should be the same.
So what would the.
Well, this, this shouldn't be done on a, I, I don't foresee it as a, a temporary solution. Uh, stripping out all those office, uh, and, and, you know. It should be a per, you know, if, um, if it's a short-term emergency situation, I think that, that should be one of the last steps you would take.
Well, short-term could be like a, a school year though.
That, right, but to, to disrupt, uh.
The senior center?
The senior center and, and, and pull out, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of, um.
Well, believe me, I've thought about this as a taxpayer. I, I'm not just asking these questions, you know, I'm, I'm kind of looking at it both as a, as a. Person that pays taxes here is, I would not like to see my tax dollars go to building this and then something come up. And then you have to take it down. That's why I was mentioning the petitions, but I understand the code. You answered that question for me, I wasn't aware of that. Um, but then it just goes to the next question about the room across the hall that's gonna be built into, in here, it shows three different offices. So, is that a need if we're already putting, you know, in the walkway into the reception area? And then there's gonna be two offices in that, you know, first room that you walk into? The room across the hall that is broken into three more offices, so again, three more, you know, permanent walls. W- what is the, um.
The fir- the first, well, the, the side on, uh, um. It's really one office and then a reception area on, on where the new entrance. The new old entrance is gonna be, we're gonna open, open up the old entrance that used to be there.
Yep.
That's for staff. The three offices across the hall are program offices.
Okay, this one shows like reception office office, so to me it looks like it's gonna be.
There's a, there's only a half wall between the o- reception and the office. There'll, there'll be a, like a, a reception desk.
Like a walk-in, right, okay.
And the only other wall.
So when you walk into reception, it's really open, it's just gonna be that half wall?
Yes.
And then there's a, an actual room?
For the, the program director's office.
Okay.
Then is there a conference room, Mike? I thought Colleen said there was a conference room in there too, no?
No, well, there's, there's, no, there, that's, uh, I mean, you have a nine hundred. It's essentially a nine hundred square foot room.
Right.
And three hundred square feet will be partitioned off approximately, just for the director's office. There'll be a, a small conference table, just like your or my office. In, in the director's office.
Director's space.
But then the rest of the reception and a half wall, uh, and, and at least two desks for the, the other staff people. Will be in there. It, it, it's pretty, yeah, so there's, there's only one full wall in that whole nine hundred square feet.
That first room.
Right.
So when people walk into the reception, then they're then ushered across the hallway to.
To the program areas.
Area that they are looking for.
Yes.
So they just come in through reception, check in and then go across the way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then, so there is no separate conference room?
No.
Um, so.
We would be using the third floor conference room if we needed a conference room.
Is that the only conference room there?
Well, I, well, I think this is where, where it would've been helpful to sort of know what the plan was, because we were under the assumption, honestly, I don't know, I thought from what Colleen had said. That there was gonna be a, a reception area, her office, and then a conference room.
Yeah, that's right.
Because when we talked about, cause, cause all along we were saying, well, cause she was saying, I need a confi- we need a confidential space for people to meet. And we kept saying to her, well, you have a conference room, but obviously if she doesn't have a conference room, then that's why she was saying, we need, not gonna work. We need other spaces that are for privacy.
Yes, that's why the, the, the three rooms across the hall, th- those are the confidential spaces. They, they have various.
About insurance and about like taking blood pressure and things like that.
Yeah.
Well, that can't be confidential, you go into CVS and get your blood pressure taken.
No, it's, it's.
I, I forget what the programs were, but I remember what you talked about.
Uh, not just.
Blood pressure, right.
Blood pressures, it's a serious medical.
Insurance and financial, yeah, right.
So is that something that would be, could that not be scheduled though, like, um, like a one or two times a month situation? Where, you know, this, this group comes in, you know, from say nine to eleven, I mean, is it gonna be a daily thing or even a, you know?
Well, in, income taxes are done from, you know, from January first until April fifteenth.
Right.
It's, it's cons- it's constant.
So she has that many elderly, um, people coming to them for that?
Yes.
I wish I had, I wish I was able to get from her, like, for, I'm sure she has it, in past years. How many, uh, what's the percentage of people that come in for that type of service?
Numbers, yeah. Uh, it's, it's, th- they used to just have one person doing it, now they have two people. And we do it on the second floor and, and they use the large second floor conference room.
Right.
And people waiting have to sit out in the general. Ha- lobby out there, it's not really a lobby, it's a, it's a busy hallway with people coming and going.
What, do you set up chios for them when you?
Yeah, they sit in the, in that area.
Um, so the need then for these three offices, Colleen is saying that that is something that, on a daily basis, they're gonna be used. Because I'm just concerned about putting these permanent walls up, now that we know we have to do these permanent walls. If they're not gonna be utilized that often.
From what I've seen downstairs and from what Colleen tells me, they'll, they'll get used, yeah.
Daily?
Yes, maybe not all three at once. Originally, the, the original plan called for putting one office. In each one of the four ninety, nine hundred square foot, uh, that. And, and the architect came back with, you know, keeping all the offices in one, one room. It didn't, because if we put the, um, offices in each one, we would have. offices in each one, we would've messed up the, uh, fire protection system and would've cost us a lot of money. So now we're only dealing with changing the fire protection in, in one office.
That does look more logical, yes.
Um.
Consolidated, um.
And, and, you know, it, it costs a lot to put it up, it doesn't cost anything to take it down. Yeah, it, it, a day, a demo, and you're, you're back to where you were.
I know, but all work done for not, almost it seems like, you know?
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, well, you, you've got three other rooms to, to occupy before you even get to that fourth room.
Would she use those for programs, Mike, too, like small programs, or are they really distinctly offices?
Um, those.
Programs, you're meaning like, like a so, like a, you know, um.
Yeah, group could be in there working on a.
No, they're, they're gonna be fitted with, with, with the desk and, and, uh, no.
So they're offices.
I mean, a real small group, you know, maybe two, three people.
So the rooms are.
But I don't know.
Gonna be s- small?
I don't know, how, how big do you think those offices are gonna be then?
Well, um.
It's nine hundred square feet, the room.
Yeah, the, they're gonna be about the size of this alcove.
Yeah, oh, that's good, it's actually.
I can kinda picture that.
And, and then out here is a, would be a sitting area, waiting area. We originally were gonna put four rooms, you know, back to back to back. But, uh, they would've fit, but it, it works out better to leave some, um, you know, sitting areas for people waiting to enter the rooms, waiting, a wait, waiting room off the, the main beaten path.
These'll be a reasonable size. It can be hard to picture when you're looking at a plan.
It's interesting that you say the school laws, so I wonder when they changed, because I went to a high school that had an open space in the middle, so it was all petitions. All the rooms were, so if I was in math class, the person, the class next to me could be the law class. The open concept, and I'm, I'm pretty sure they still.
Well, I mean, in the high school, we still have the, the removable walls, and that's not a.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, petitions, you could see underneath and you could see over there, well, they're six foot, you know.
Yeah, I know there's an elementary school in Amesbury that.
That does that.
Yes, um, Cashman.
So I'm wondering if that is, if that's like a, a, um.
That's why I hired an architect to tell me what to do, I don't know.
If that's something that if, it's like Grand Park or Dend?
It might be a new code.
Well, that's what I mean, so if you do any changes, then you have to follow the code, just like the gym.
Yeah, yes.
We found that out, the hard way, um.
Believe me, we wouldn't do it if we didn't have to, because of the expense, we're, uh, asked the architect to, you know, to uh, keep it, keep the price down. I mean, the original cost estimate could've knocked me over with a feather. We're talking a hundred, half a million dollars. And we've got it down to less than, you know, right around three hundred now, I think, with, and with the various savings with Whittier and, and things like that, I think we're gonna come in under three hundred.
I, I have, I like the idea of a senior center, I'm, I'm, I'm all there. I, I guess I'm, you know, being on the school committee, you know, it, it's our job to, to look after the school. And, and I guess my sort of issue with it, it feels like an imperfect solution to, um, to the challenge of getting a senior center in town. I'm pretty confident that no matter what happens, we're never getting the space back. Because I don't think any of us, we, we can't tell the senior centers and community in the town that, sorry, you've had a senior center for five years and we need the space back. Uh, just being realistic, I don't think that would go over very well. And I, yeah, I certainly wouldn't wanna volunteer to be the person who said that. Sorry, Barbie. But, I mean, and, and that, I have a concern as it relates to our ability to do what we need to do a, as a school committee in the future. Um, I think my other real issue is, you know, we're, we're being, this is the first time I'm seeing any plans, this is the first time, um, I think any of us are really sort of understanding what, what the big picture is with concrete details. And I know from watching the board of selectmen meeting last night, there are guys waiting in the hallway with hammers, essentially ready to start. So I don't really get the sense that I'm being given the opportunity to re- to review it and understand it and actually vote on it. I'm essentially being told, you said they wanted to start it Christmas, you know, before Christmas, and that's next week. So I think that's my reservation, is I don't think we've been really given, we've been, I know there were meetings in terms of the MOU, but I don't know that there's been a, a dialogue, communication between the various groups.
Well, and then to have a dialogue with us, because open meeting law, you can't do that
Right.
Until we're all here, and it does definitely seem, I feel the same way Michael does, is that it's, we're making a huge decision and it almost feels like I'm not, as a school committee, being given that ability to make that decision because people are saying, oh no, it's all, you know, these are the dates, this is happening, just like a town meeting, when Michael pointed it out, it's like a vote was, you know, we were asking the town to vote, but yet we, as a committee, weren't given that respect, I wanna say, as a committee to, to say how we felt. It was a little like backwards, and I'm all for the, the senior center, believe me. I applaud Colleen, I applaud her for everything that she does, but we, as a school committee, have to look at the best, what's best for the schools and for the kids and, and things, so uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be looked at, or this committee be looked at, is we don't want the senior center to happen, because that's furthest from the truth, I think it's wonderful, but I agree with what you're saying.
Well, these, these plans have been circulating since August, is this, this floor plan.
So are you saying that?
Only change was from four offices to three, that's the only thing we've changed since August.
I thought we did vote on approving the concept of the senior center.
Yeah, the five rooms.
Ago.
And that was the only detail that we.
Yeah, like I didn't.
There was no detail behind that.
When we did the walkthrough that time, um, a group of us did, you know, a lot of people were like, oh, I could see this happen and this happen, and like you had said, now an architect comes in and says, oh no, you know, you need to consolidate it, obviously for, that would save you a lot of money, but I didn't know any of that. And, and then last week at the MOU meeting, I, we talked about the petitions and I didn't, obviously you just got that information, I, I get that, but that day, leaving that meeting, I didn't know anything other than, wow, that, maybe that is a possibility, to use the petitions. But now I'm being told it's not, but again, this is the first time that, as a committee, we're realizing exactly what's gonna happen to those rooms. You know, so that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Well, I, I mean, you, you, you're saying, Michael, that we would never be able to take back. We, you couldn't see us realistically taking back the space. And I heard for the first time a short while ago that our town has a capacity of having twelve thousand people live here at some point, which I had never heard before. And so even though we don't yet have rising enrollment, I suppose it is, it is possible, and, and at that time.
When was that twelve thousand number? Like by what, what year?
Oh, it's, it's just, just potential.
There's no timing, there was, there was a build-out analysis done, done back in two thousand and seven.
Okay.
It's just based on on current land use zoning, that they, that the potential is there for uh, enough housing, and I don't know how many people they count uh, per house, I mean, the, the days of the Brady Bunch are over, I mean, it's now,
Right.
You know, two point three people per household, not four point three.
Right. Right, but I, I'm just saying, I would not, you know, hesitate, nor would I expect a school committee of the future to hes- hesitate if we really needed that space to look for another solution, if like, you know, it was just it, it made more sense to build a new senior center somewhere else and put, you know, the greater enrollment here and maybe that would be possible at the time. I mean, I'm seeing more flexibility in the future. You know, hopefully this will be fine and we'll be fine and everybody will be fine, but, you know, we do have to, this is why we come up with these agreements, in, in the event that that is not the case.
I, I, I get that's, it is an agreement, but, but practically speaking, I don't think we would be able to, to get the space back. Or we would, we would have to have that solution, well, like.
I mean, to me, you know, you, numbers could justify it.
But I think if you put the wording, the proper wording in a binding agreement, then you would get it back. So you're, you're just going off on a, you know, this like a theory, but if you put it.
But I, I also know that, that however many people at town meeting stood up and cheered and.
But it would be binding in an agreement, so.
And I think the.
But someone has to take that agreement and stand behind it, so that's what he's saying.
So yes, we have the legal right to, but could we actually do it?
Is what his concern.
And, you know.
I, I, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Who wants to be the person that says that agreement is coming to the point where we need it back?
But it's based on the, the needs and the, it's a school, so it's based on that first, the needs of the school first.
Yeah.
We're, we're, the selectmen are saying, we'll, we'll return it to as it was, that, that, that there's, there's no question.
And that's just if. If it ever.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, we, the, the, the chance of that happening, I think are slim and none.
Let's hope not.
Well, all indications are, all the studies of enrollment have been going down. You, you're built, you built that school at a maximum enrollment, you can't get any more people in there because them, MSBA said, you know.
Right, it's a diamond soul.
It's, you're not gonna need, that's your maximum amount of space.
And maybe two point three people, but we are building houses like crazy.
Well, and I'm not sure when they had their formula, if they had this twelve thousand population figure.
Should've. I, I don't know, you know, they, 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 everybody, every town does a build-out analysis.
But I, you know, I feel, I, I think this, um, agreement is very well put together and well-written. You know, I think that there is flexibility, I, I see flexibility in it for both, for all parties concerned.
So when is the, when is the construction slated to begin?
Um, you know, ideally as soon as we get the construction documents. Um, which I was promised to have them next week.
So over the holiday break?
Well, they're, they're in high school, so now, they, they were hoping to get in before high, before Christmas break, but now obviously, I think it's gonna have to be until after Christmas break.
So you told me today, Mike, that the selectmen are voting on, are they're going to vote on this on Monday?
Well, because of these, because of the conversations that Phil and Barbie had and the, and the changes, the, the other change is, is, is more ministerial, it's on number, uh, number thirteen. Um, document says.
Six.
Uh, page six.
Last page.
Yep.
Um, the agreement may not be modified, nor may, um, compliance with terms be waived, except by written instrument executed by the board of selectmen in the school committee. The previous version said by the town administrator and the, and the.
Oh, right, and the, and the representative, um.
And, and the, uh,
Superintendent?
Superintendent.
Well, we did talk about that.
Carol, but I, I, I don't get to sign leases, so.
So, so that, and the one where, oh, so you made this change?
Yeah.
The one we.
The selectmen.
Okay.
Offered.
Well, at the, at the meeting we had last week, that we, remember, we did talk about that, well, like, should it be all the selectmen and the school committee and then?
Right, yeah.
So I do remember, so they, they thought that that would be best?
Yes. So they, they agreed to put the school back the way it was before there was a, uh, a senior center. At no cost to the school district.
I mean, that sounds like a bonus, but, I mean, why?
Yeah, why would they incur?
It would be stupid for us to sign any, to, to agree to something.
But it wasn't in there, so.
Alright, fair, okay.
Making sure it's in there.
That's fair, that's fair.
No, at the last meeting too, we, we, at the last, uh, few minutes, we talked about the cafeteria with, with Colleen, um.
Yeah, that got changed to a different color.
The blue?
Yeah, it's a by appointment home.
No, no, the.
No, it's a shared space on.
Shared space.
No, well, the, so the ca- right, the cafeteria though, we, cause she did have some concerns that we didn't realize were concerns until just the other day at the meeting, when she, um, seemed to need the cafeteria more than originally we thought, because at that meeting, she had actually.
Well, a lot of their programs revolve around food. She has breakfast, um, and, and any, and a lot of these meetings, they serve food at.
I know, I, but that's why I'm wondering why at, why at the last meeting it was that till the end, because I didn't know that there was any issue.
In there in the summer, nobody was using the cafeteria.
But she knew it was still gonna be a school. That we're still having students there, paying, you know.
But nobody was using it. We had no reason to unders- to know that the kids were gonna be eating lunch there, because they hadn't been doing it before.
I guess that's sort of my point, is I feel like the communication has been lacking. I mean, Carol, like, people who know the building and know the space and know how it's used, know that kids eat lunch in there. I, I, I have trouble understanding how, we just came to this realization last week, when this has been going on for four, five months or whatever, you know, like, the, the real planning aspect has been going on for four months, five months, I'm not blaming you, I just, that feels like the communication problem, where I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if there was another cafeteria issue that we just haven't realized yet, that Colleen is expecting to use certain space this way, not recognizing that it's being used by the preschool already, whether it's schedule or setup or whatever it is, that, that there is sort of an overlap that we just.
I don't think it's a big issue, cause you get twenty kids and six adults using it for a half hour a day.
Well, it is, it is, yeah.
There's sixty kids, I did that research with, I met with Amanda, and she said there's, on, on busiest day, there's sixty kids. And, and so what she, what she asked about, you know how there's the two doors?
Mm-hmm.
Right. That if there was a way for us to take partitions, portable partitions. So she, they would come in the regu- the, the door, right, and within that class, within that structure, there could be a, I call it a, you know, a U.
Yeah, no, that would definitely be the best way to do it.
Here's the problem. Colleen is feeling very clear that she needs to have that space available to her when the seniors' meals are delivered, and so I think she said eleven thirty to twelve fifteen is when she needed it. Well, that's actually the same time that the kids need it, because they have two lunches. Um, and it would be hard for Amanda to have the little kids go in at ten thirty and eleven o'clock to eat. If they have a full day.
Pro nine.
Right. And twelve thirty feels too late for the little ones to eat, so we would have to figure out.
Kids and the elders are on the same eating schedule. You know, it comes full circle.
They are, but what we, what we would do to make that work would be to create a, a barrier.
I think that's a, a.
Be over by the, by the, but, you know, we just have to make sure, because it really is, Michael, it has to, the needs of the kids have to be accommodated too, you know?
I mean, we can add that into the, the plan, it's not wa- it's not too late for that.
Will the seniors be using the kitchen?
Yes.
They will be using the kitchen. And I did, when I talked to Amanda, she said that they don't have a big need for the kitchen. So I don't think that's gonna be, uh, as big an issue as maybe we thought it was the other day. But again, I would hope there'd be some give and take, if there's some kind of special event that the preschool wants to do, that Colleen would understand that.
Absolutely.
She, she needs to, I mean, as long as it wasn't her birthday parties, or big, her men's breakfast or something like that, that she clearly, I mean, we'd have to figure that out, but you know, I had the impression that Amanda was willing to, you know, try to create that schedule. But it wasn't as big an issue for her, except for the fact that the kids needed to be able to eat in that space at that time.
Right, and that would be something that Amanda would communicate with the parents.
Absolutely.
Right, you know, but that's, what if there are, what if there are parents that, you know, are like, we have some. Right, you know, but that's, what if there, what if there are parents that, you know, are like, we have some issues with that?
I don't know.
Well, I, and I could.
Because, I mean, you, you, yeah.
I mean, the adults are always gonna be there with the children.
Well, and I guess the other thing is that building is a peanut nut free building.
Mm-hmm.
And.
We didn't discuss that.
That's another thing that.
Well, just in terms of the seniors and what, what their food and meals needs are.
Yeah, what their dietary needs are.
I, I mean, that is a.
That is an issue.
Yeah.
I, I think it's only an issue if it's not, if, if we don't have designated spaces and people aren't cleaning up the spaces. Right, I mean, we don't have anybody in the school that has airborne peanut allergies.
Today.
Well, today, but, you know, we would know that in advance and we'd have to work around that. Um, but, it's really, it's really, you know, the little kids with their hands on the, you know, the banisters and, you know, we're, we're concerned about that, or in the classroom, you know.
So, like, the seniors won't be following that.
Protocol.
I don't, we haven't talked about that, actually.
Yeah, it's a business.
I mean, I don't know.
I know, but that is a, that is a big issue, I don't know, it is.
We didn't, we didn't talk that well.
I know. So, I think that's something that we need to talk to Colleen about, because, um, I mean, that was a big deal, making that school a peanut-free school a long time ago. How long has it been? It's been a long time.
It's been, but I question whether or not we have to worry about it if the senior center is really in a designated area and our kids aren't in that area.
Um.
The only question would be, how could we work with that in the cafeteria? Cause that, that would be the.
Right, no, I'm just putting, I'm thinking of the, the parents that I know that's children have these allergies.
Oh, yeah.
It's a, it's a big deal.
It is, it is a big.
And I almost feel bad that we didn't.
We didn't think of it.
That we didn't think of it, so I apologize to those kids that have that allergy and we didn't bring that up.
So, would you wanna, would you wanna put something in the section that talks about, um, the shared space? That, cause it says, shared space in cafeteria, kitchen, scheduled spaces. Or have like a separate section that just says. But is that something we can put in, vote on without Colleen being here to say that that's something that can be done?
Sure.
Gotta work for her at the same time.
Huh? Did you say sure?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so what would we be putting in there? Where, any facilities covered, right?
We have here permitted use of active areas, the district shall be entitled, come on page two.
Of active areas.
The district shall be entitled to the use of the cafeteria and gymnasium for public school and school-related. During the summer hours, such as active, so I don't wonder if it, something goes there.
How do, and, and, and I mean, in part, a lot of it's gonna be figuring out how to live together. I mean, I get that there's gonna be some sort of figuring stuff out, but, like, thinking about the summer school program, Camp Invention, I don't know what that schedule looks like.
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, there are a lot of schedules that have to mesh in terms of meals and, and everything else, we wanna make sure, I mean, Camp Invention was a great program. It needs to come back, we need to make sure that we're not losing out on that. You know, stuff like that, I wanna make sure that we're not losing that because of, of a scheduling problem, or a.
And is that where it would be?
Or lack of space problem.
Margaret?
The Camp Invention would probably be at Pembroke, however, there are the summer programs for, again, the.
Pearl Palace.
Yeah.
So that would probably have to be at Pearlie, so that is an element to consider. But I'm, I'm thinking if wording is the issue, we could probably take it right out of the district, because we al, we already have the guidelines about the nut and peanut.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Working at wording, we could just take it right from what we have.
From, from the handbook.
Yes.
Now, is the, um, the reason that we had, I know we had a lot of allergies before with the, but, did we keep that because it was consistently having, you know, kids that were coming to the school had them, or is it, um, because I, I know other elementary schools that aren't.
It's, it's two things.
Peanut.
Children do have allergies, but in, in pre-K and primary, children aren't responsible for themselves, they re, they require us to look after them.
Right.
So that's why we maintain such stringent guidelines.
Because of the age, right.
Right, and then at Pembroke, it's still, again, in kindergarten, they're still young, but then as they get older and then, you know, you release the responsibility, the kitchen is still peanut and nut prohibited, and we're not allowing products in, but if you, if you bring in your lunch and you're not in a room where there's a child with an allergy, you can have peanut butter in it.
Mm-hmm.
Because at that, you know, as you get older, you, you are aware, I'm gonna go sit at the table, you know, that's not.
I'm not gonna share my lunch with.
Right.
So that's why at Pearlie, we've maintained the nut prohibited though.
Okay, so under the, um, four, what, what are you writing over there?
I'm just, just, I was, I was looking at per, number four.
Yeah.
Permitted use of active areas, and I was wondering if, if we could add, see, it's got the district and the town, so if we said the preschool students will eat in the cafeteria from eleven thirty to twelve thirty on a daily basis. Right, but I was, then I was playing with the second one that says senior citizens will share the cafeteria space with the preschool students, you know, from, um, eleven thirty to twelve thirty. On Monday through Friday, if that's what she, if Monday through Thursday, whether she's only. So, I mean, we could just use the same, if we like that, we can say, we can say, the preschool students will share the cafeteria space with senior citizens, you know, and then do the same thing with, you know, just repeat it on the upper one. So in other words, the top one would say, under the first paragraph would say, the preschool students will share the cafeteria space with senior citizens from eleven thirty to twelve thirty on a daily basis. And then the second, the one at the, underneath the town will say, senior citizens will share the cafeteria space with preschool students from eleven thirty to twelve thirty on Monday through Thursday. I don't know if that solves the problem.
Where does the, the nut come in?
Nut. Um.
Adhering to the nut-free.
Um.
Policy.
Environment.
I don't know.
Or is that a big? Okay, so what would, so what would that look like? So we could add a little section here that says, you know, the Pearlie school is a nut-free school, but again, it, it's really, it's really the cafeteria space that's the most, because the senior center is significantly separate.
Right.
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 Right, so if, so if, if the, whoever's cleaning the spaces.
Yeah, we're just talking about the. And that's all the, but that's the only place where food will be.
Clean, if the, you know, cleans the, it's a.
Cleaned at the senior center, right.
If the caf, custodian cleans the cafeteria and just knows that you, you have that, that area where the, um, kids eat, needs to be.
Well, and even, I would say, the available by appointment space to, just needs to be.
There's no kids up there.
Well, like, the gym.
Are the, oh, oh, the gym, yes, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the second page there, I believe it's upstairs.
Okay, so. But is this a conversation that Colleen needs to be involved in?
I don't, Mike's saying no.
No, just tell, tell us what you need and we'll work around it.
I'm trying to between. Can I ask a question on maintenance? I've, I've heard the term lease used a couple of times, and, and I, I like the idea of sort of looking at it that way. It says that we're responsible for maintenance facilities, blacktop, sidewalks, parking areas, and the active use areas, subject to normal wear and tear. Um, I guess my question is, we're maintaining the building. Um, I'm not, and I'm, I'm not talking about custodial services, but we're, we're maintaining the, I'm trying to think of an example, you know, the, the plug comes out of the wall, we're the ones fixing it, correct?
Yes.
I guess in part, we're not collecting any rent. So we're on the hook.
We're, we're, we're paying for custodian and maintenance.
We're, you're paying for a custodian.
And, and maintenance. It's included.
It doesn't, it doesn't list it as under maintenance, but the.
Oh, custodial slash maintenance service. Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm.
What about restitution?
Feels like we're on the hook for a lot of maintenance, and ten thousand bucks isn't that much. And, and I'm not suggesting that anyone's gonna go in and, and break the place, but.
But we're also responsible for any, you know, if we break anything, we, we have to fix it.
Restitution and repair, number, section nine.
You're taking care of normal wear and tear.
Right, if something's bad, yeah.
And, and if, if a program.
If there's a rowdy senior center event.
Yeah, if they get wild and crazy and break all the windows, and, you know, we're gonna replace them.
Yeah, we discussed that, we discussed that at the last meeting.
That's kind of an image.
So you had left the meeting prior to the discussion about cafeteria?
Apparently.
That came, yeah, that came up at the very last, uh, few minutes.
My last one is, agreement begins July first, and I get that that's the tax year, but if you're doing construction in January, why doesn't this agreement start January one? Or, you know, pick a date, but.
Start when you want.
Yeah, we, it can start any date.
Okay.
I, actually, I. Yeah, uh, it's, we don't think we're gonna get in there until, that, that, that would be the, see, we, we've got half our money to construct now. We, we're hoping to get the other half from CPC.
Right.
That money will not even be available to us till Janu, July one. With, for all intents and purposes, the programming probably won't start till September at the earliest.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. I guess my thought is, is you're going in and, and, and building and making changes. I'm just thinking of a regular lease.
Yeah.
They always sort of start upon possession of the space, not.
Well, landlords will do fit up too, on, in other leases.
If we're the ones building it.
Mm-hmm.
Not, I mean, if, I know we're all on the same team, but it's not our.
So what would you like the date to be?
I, I.
We don't need any janitorial services while we're doing construction. We're gonna be making a lot of dirt, well, but we, uh, and, and I've specifically talked to the engineer in the construction docks that the contractors have to take, I wouldn't say extreme, but, uh, very, uh, strenuous, uh, efforts to keep the dust and construction debris out of the school part.
And that should be easy, because we shut those doors. I mean, it should, it should be relatively simple to do that.
It should be, but we're going to over, have overkill in that respect.
Yeah, well, we're happy to hear that, that's good.
We'll put, we'll put up, uh, you know, um, plastic.
Barrier, yeah.
Barriers.
So it won't get through even the little holes and stuff.
Right.
Right. Yeah, cause that can make a big mess.
It sure can.
Having kitchen.
Yeah, especially when you're dealing with, uh, sheet rock.
Right. You don't want that floating around, so that's good. Um, so do you want that to, um, begin, what date are you thinking, December thirty first? Of twenty fifteen?
I would do, my thought would be to do it before sort of giving access.
Yeah, and without, so with the, well, the first access will be the wittier kids.
Yes.
Right, and that can't be done until after, uh, January second.
So you'll say after January.
January.
Just make it a January first, and it might not, it might not be in there, but.
January first. Yeah, January first, twenty sixteen.
Okay, so then we'll.
Does everyone change the date that it's dated?
An agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
Dated too. Move that date back.
Then the parties will meet no later than January fifteenth. Twenty nineteen, you might want that to be.
Well, it's really like a three and a half year agreement instead of a three year. I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm not talking about changing the end date, I think that makes sense to leave it the same as the, as the tax year.
Yeah. Don't we have a, that we're gonna, let's see.
Yeah, that's three years data. From January fifteenth to twenty nineteen.
The end date doesn't. Right. The end date doesn't change, so it's gonna be, be three years.
It'll be like three and a half.
Okay.
January through the end of June, three years later.
I don't have any objections.
I mean, I'm just, but they're meeting January.
But we're meeting, we're meeting here to review at extent.
Oh.
But the actual.
Oh, it's not peanut, I remember, right.
The date of the end of the agreement, if it were to end, would be June thirty, twenty nineteen.
June thirty. Um.
Did you make any changes on that?
So here's what, so, cause I'm, I'm, I have the master, so I'm trying to make sure I have the cap, I have the. So I'm gonna change, on page one, I'm gonna change, date of December ninth to January first, two thousand sixteen. Might as well, you're gonna sign it after that anyway, right? Then change the term to January.
What date?
What was that first one?
Well, this one here, I was gonna do, I was just gonna change if the, it's effective, so, yeah.
Yeah, the date of December, yeah, and what are you gonna put up there?
Just January first, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
All right, so then on the second page, on page two, under number four, I was gonna add a sentence to the end of the first paragraph about the district to say, the preschool students will share the cafeteria, um, from eleven thirty to twelve thirty on a daily basis. I, I could say to be consistent, I can say Monday through Friday.
Thursday.
No, Monday through Thursday. Monday through Thursday. Okay, and then I was gonna do the same thing at the end of the second paragraph, which is say, senior citizens will share the cafeteria with the preschool students from eleven thirty, twelve thirty on Monday through Thursday. Then I was thinking about adding a new little bit on that par, to a new paragraph that says, the Pearlie school is a peanut nut-free school. Shared spaces or spaces by appointment must adhere to the district policy.
Okay.
I mean, that's gonna be a problem, depending on what she serves.
Right, that's why I'm thinking, like, we don't know what she's bringing in.
I don't know, and, and again, I mean, I don't tell Margaret this, but Laura knew, she's called contraband. You know, I used to bring in, you know, peanut stuff, and, uh, you know, I didn't go put it down in the kids' rooms, you know, I, I smear my hands all over the walls, but.
So you're a rule breaker.
I was a rule breaker, Laura used to say, get those peanuts away, that, that's contraband. But, so I'm, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what the happy medium there is, right? So within the senior center space, it shouldn't be a problem, that, and that doesn't say that. It, I'm just trying to do the shared spaces, you know, so. Again, if the kids are in there, I, I don't know, I don't know, that, I think that's a little tricky, I don't think it's deal breaker, I think it's a little, logistically a little tricky.
We'll just have to work.
We'll have to work with it.
Round it.
And then on page three, I was not sure if we were going to amend, in Mike's new language, return of classroom spaces. Whether we were just gonna stay with enrollment, or we were gonna use the language from the.
Unforeseen emergencies. I would use that language.
I, I think unforeseen.
And just be uniform too, because that's under the termination.
I mean, I, I agree with you, Mike, it's not an emerg, like, it's not something like a temporary situation, it'd be an unforeseen emergency that was gonna require.
It's actually on the last page too, Carol.
I know, that's where it is, that's why I just wasn't sure, um, you know, if I had a question mark as to whether I was adding it. So I just wanna get some direction from you, I was.
I would have that.
Okay, so I'm gonna use the same, let me just find it. Uh, sorry, where am I, I wondered.
Top, top of page six.
Terminated any time prior to its expiration for failure, da, 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 required, for unforeseen emergencies. Okay, then, uh, nothing, that's, that's three, nothing on four, nothing on five, and on six, I'm going to change our, the version I had to Board of Selectmen and School Committee, right?
Right.
Okay, and then the, the signatures will go below. I can make those changes if that's, so just in terms of approval, right, I, Mike has a meeting on Monday morning.
Monday morning at seven thirty.
If you, do you guys need more time to think about what?
So, are you saying to go to this selectman meeting?
No.
No, no.
The selectmen are going to meet again to.
We don't have another meeting after September, until January fourteenth.
To accept the MOU.
To approve this.
And we don't meet again until the eleventh.
So that's why he's having a special meeting for it. So I don't know what the committee wants to do about that.
Um, so could we have a special meeting for it?
I mean, I, I don't know completely how urgent.
Well, I mean, if, if, if they wanna start building January small, we need, it needs to be voted on.
Right, I don't think you wanna start construction before both parties have agreed, even in con, you know, it's con, conceptually, it sounds like there's, you know, agreement on the board of selectmen's part, and depending on how the committee's feeling tonight, but you wanna formal vote, don't you, before things move forward?
Yes.
I think we said the same thing, right, we wanna formal vote.
But, you know, subject to th, those.
Yeah, cause your people wanna see them.
Changes, could, could you vote on that tonight?
Um, it is, as far as those office spaces across, is, is the committee, uh, are you comfortable with that? With, with the construction going into that first room, the reception and the, the one office, separated by the, you know, half wall, and then the room. And then the room across, having that room be broken into three smaller offices?
I think so, I, but I, I think the language in here is important.
Okay, so you're more comfortable because the language is, is in there?
But, but, we're making the change.
Okay.
I, I'm comfortable, I certainly like it a lot better than the original plan to have.
All the rooms cut out.
All the rooms cut out, that makes a lot more sense.
Right, yeah. I'm just, I'm, I'm still, uh, just wondering how much space, how much use it'll, it's gonna get. That it, it does require the, that room to be split into three. You know, I'm just saying that for the record, I, I do still, um, question whether it does need to, that room needs to be broken into three. And that's just being a school committee member as well as a taxpayer.
Well, I think we're also building for future use as well as current use.
But, but we don't know what future use is gonna look like. I, I, and that, and that's my frustration, I feel like we're planning for, we're building the building for ten years from now, when, with all due respect to Colleen, she does a great job, but she doesn't really have any space, so I don't know, I don't know that we're, we're, we're planning to have five spaces and sort of saying that it's gonna be seven, without, nobody knows how this space is gonna be used. And, and so we're building the, the plan for twenty twenty-five before anyone set foot in the building.
Yeah, 'cause the, the only, um, data that we've really received is how many seniors live in our community. Not, you know, like I had said, I'm sure Colleen has, like, how many people utilize her services, I'm sure she has all that, but I've never seen it.
Hi.
Have you seen it?
Yeah.
She's been to your board before.
With that.
Well, well, we talk about the birthday parties, but you, as far as the, how many people actually come in, I mean, you're telling me that people are sitting out there waiting.
But what's the difference if we build two offices in that room, or three, or four?
No, I, no, I was saying any of those offices, I wasn't saying, I'm saying, does that room need to be broken?
But we need offices, yes, absolutely, without a doubt.
Okay, well, before you came here though, I was under the understanding that there was gonna be a conference room in that first room. And Michael was too, and so wasn't the superintendent.
There was never.
So I don't know where the, the, where that came up, but.
I don't know either, there's never gonna be a conference room in that first room.
Okay, so, but just to be clear, I'm not asking if that room should be broken into two instead of three, I'm asking if it needs to be broken down into anything.
Absolutely, it sounds.
Okay. I'm just saying, that, that's, that's my only question.
We wouldn't be going through that expense Barbie if, if we didn't think it was necessary.
I, I, I would hope not. As a taxpayer, I would hope not.
Did she say there's seventeen hundred seniors? Did she say that?
There's seventeen hundred seniors.
Half of them use the senior center services?
I can't, I can't remember now, I mean, and, and there was, she broke it down into specific, I don't know, I, I, I don't wanna talk about what may have been said.
Right, no, 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 I, I'm sorry, I, you know.
We, we can't do that, but, um, that's, that's, I'm, I'm just saying, uh, that that's my concern. If the committee is fine with, you know, making a motion, if someone would like to make a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve this, then more than welcome to do that. Without reviewing it any further and having a special meeting. Would anyone like to do that?
I think there's still questions, just, or uncertainties, so a special meeting might be more.
See, the only problem with that is it would have to be prior to the selectman meeting. 'Cause we would have to have everything ironed out before Monday.
Oh, if you.
Well, we did, we have to make sure that the selectmen are okay with these changes, before, otherwise it's not worth us meeting at all.
Changes.
They're, they're okay with it, I'm telling you.
Sounds like they've.
They've sent him in.
But that's part of, that, I, that, that's, that's, that's part of my problem with this, with this whole thing, is, is.
Get it done, right?
We're just trying to get it done, man.
I, 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 I get it.
So is this their only agenda item on Monday morning?
Yeah.
So.
They, they figured you could tentatively make the agreement tonight, and they would, um.
I know, but we brought up, we brought up, I think, significant questions.
Yeah, so the question is, is it, is it worth, I mean, I don't know, is there enough of you that can go to a meeting on Monday morning and have a joint meeting? And discuss these things, and then you can be in a position to determine whether or not you, 'cause, 'cause, I mean, Mike's the middle guy here, right? So.
And we're beating up on him pretty well, so.
So if you wanna.
That's why they sent me. No, they're, they want it done.
He takes nothing personal.
They want it done, that's what, that's the message.
That's right. They, they, they said, they sent me here and said, get it done.
I know, I do agree though with Michael that that's, we brought up some significant questions.
You don't think Colleen's gonna have any issue with those peanut?
She's gonna have to live with that, I mean, yeah, she's gonna have, that's why she's not here tonight, I'm here to get the job done. Um, you know, we'll make it work. And she's, she's ill as well.
She'll be more ill.
Okay, well, again, I will, I will just reiterate, my, my concerns, I'm gonna stand behind those concerns, even though you say that yes, you need the offices, I'm just saying, I question that. If the committee would like, if, if someone would like to make a motion, I would be more than happy to entertain it.
Oh, Barbie.
You were saying, do, do you feel like you need a conference room?
Is, because we, it was confusion about conference room.
No, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm.
She's, she's the offices is what you're, and there's no way that there could be portable offices.
Yeah, mine's more like that whole school.
They need permanent walls.
Okay, well, I, I will, um, make a, make a motion, um, that the school committee, for the school committee to approve this memorandum of agreement, uh, between the Georgetown Public Schools and the town of Georgetown, um, as amended in Carol's notes, as we have discussed here, um, to be approved. No.
That makes sense, that's a good job.
Okay.
You need a second.
I'll second. Um, are there any, are there any questions, yeah, are there any discussions?
No, I think we've beaten this one like a.
Discussions? All right. So. How, who, who would like to, um.
It's all those in favor.
Yes.
All, all in favor, I've never done this before, I didn't expect that to be. All, all in favor. Aye.
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 So two?
Okay, and so all those not in favor?
No.
I, I.
I have too many questions.
Information.
So you have too many questions?
I, I would like more information.
Okay.
So are you abstaining?
I can do that.
Or are you voting against it?
Why don't I do that, why don't I abstain?
Did Bobby say, did you say aye?
I really wish we had a discussion, because we could've had a meeting then on Monday, if anybody, if people could've made it.
Yes. You could've had a discussion.
So let's, let's have the discussion, let's have a discussion.
Well, wait, did you finish the vote, 'cause, did you finish that vote? 'Cause somebody, you can, you can have another vote, I think.
I, I, I did, I said yes.
Oh, okay.
But I'm saying, I didn't, when I said the committee, I didn't know that, that there would be more discussion.
So it's no, it's three yeses.
It's three yeses.
One no.
One no, and one abstain.
What do you mean you didn't know that there would be more discussion? Well, it seemed like everybody else other than me, because I was saying that I still have the concern about the rooms.
Yes.
That no one else had said that they had concerns like I did, so I didn't think there were any further concerns other than me.
Right. Are there any further concerns?
And now, well, for one person to abstain and one person to be nay, then yeah. We're not all in agreement.
But I, but, but I did, okay, well, and it, no, it's, so it's not a unanimous vote, but we did, I did.
So that's the thing. But it's.
It's a majority, it's a majority.
And if anyone had concerns of further discussion.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
But I, I mean, hopefully this process going forward will entail a lot more communication than has been the case before.
But this is, but this is where the communication needed to happen during this whole process, so to think that it's gonna get better? I don't think so, but that's, that's.
Well, it, well, so let's ask this question for everybody, so, do you think if you had another meeting on whenever, Monday with the selectmen or on your own, that the vote would change? Is there, is there new information that's probably gonna come on the table? Is, is, is it that, well, we need to know whether the Board of Selectmen can agree with it? What, what would, what would make, what would change, what more conversation needs to have, what would change the vote if you had a special?
Well, for, for me, the vote is not gonna change.
Yes.
Because I'm saying my concerns, you're telling me that, that you need, that you, that you need.
Right.
That's a key piece of the project.
And I'm respecting your opinion as saying, yes, they are definitely needed.
Yeah.
So in the agreement, I'm fine with it saying that it'll be returned to us.
Mm-hmm.
So, no, my, my vote would not change.
Michael, would your vote change with new information?
It would, I guess mine would not change between now and Monday, mine is, I'm not convinced all the right questions have been asked, and all the right questions have been answered, in terms of sharing the space and, and overlaps and, and, and stuff like that. I don't think, from what I've seen in terms of communication, I don't think we've done a holistic review of, of how the space needs to be used from a school perspective to know what, if any overlaps, there would be on the seniors' side. There might be none, and that would be great, but I don't think we've done that. We, we, the Board of Selectmen, the Council on Aging, have done the work necessary to actually know that that is the case, and that can happen in the next.
But I thi- I think there's enough in the agreement that.
To protect.
That, yeah, the school's protected, and that, you know, we're gonna be responsible and work whatever needs to be worked out on, on a operational, not, not a policy level, but on the operational level. You're, you're, I, I'm hearing you say the operational level isn't as, as tight as you'd like it to be.
Right, and it's.
And, and, and we're gonna have to tighten it as we do the operation, we can't foresee, you know, we're trying to crystal ball the policy part of it, uh, but, you know, until the, until we actually start.
But our hope is that communication will be good though, when something comes up.
Operating.
Right, but I also know, the reason, and it is absolutely operational, but we just said that
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause, um.
That agreement describes the process.
The preschool will only use the cafeteria between eleven and twelve thirty. We just said that we can't use it any other time.
Oh, no, no, that's not my understanding of what we're saying.
No, that's not, no.
We were just, we, no, we were just saying that, that during that period in, from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, we'll share the space.
That's the shared time.
The, the expectation isn't that we only get to use it that time. What, what happened is Colleen, at the last min- meeting, raised issues of, that she has a number of things that she operates for programs that she just wanna be able to go in and out of the kitchen, 'cause there's food. And so we had said, well, we need to check with the preschool first, to make sure that the preschool doesn't have needs for the cafeteria. So if we said the preschool needs the cafeteria two days a week from, uh, twelve thirty to three o'clock.
Hmm, okay, no, that's, that's.
So, so we, we did talk about that, but we, we understand that, that's why I went to Amanda at the request of the group and said, Amanda, is this, is this something where we definitely need to carve out this time, or are we gonna have an issue? If the senior center pretty much can use that space, well, if you don't need it. Right, and she said, we don't need that space, like, regularly every week, so that I would feel like we needed to sort of say, no one could use it during this time. As long as we could have flexibility if we needed it. So Suzanne, would your vote change? No, you were a yes, and Pam's a yes, so you have a, you have a, you basically have a, and Cheryl, I don't know where you stand on it.
I was just a little confused.
Yeah, but you have a cor- you have a, um, majority vote, so.
Yep. We do.
I fully support the senior center.
I know.
I just.
We know that.
Yep, no questions.
I mean, I think since I've been sitting in on the, the MOU process, you know, I'm just more familiar with, I, I mean, I feel.
And that is hard when you're a person who's not in.
Yeah, that the seniors are going to have for these spaces, so I.
But we do need, we'll just have to, like you said, tighten up the communication, and any questions that people have, we just have to get the answers, you know?
Right.
So that there's not a frustration on people feeling like they're all, especially if you're in control of the space. I understand. Okay. So I, I'll make these changes to this.
So you'll make the changes, you'll send them out, just so we can all take a look at it.
I'll send them out, and then, when will you sign them? Hold on, just a minute here, 'cause you, 'cause you know what, you could sign the back sheet.
Right now?
No, you can't, 'cause I have to fix that back sheet.
Yeah, we can come in, we'll come in and sign it, and then when the Board of Selectmen reviews it on Monday, hopefully they will.
So you could come in and sign it.
Not have any additional.
Yeah.
If they, what happens there? If the Board of Selectmen says, no, I can't live with it, or we, we, now we need this.
Mike already said that, it's been sent in as the.
You think the chances are that are slim?
Well, we, we just agreed to this agreement.
They, they would've signed it last night.
Let me move my arm from behind my back now.
It's great. We, if, if the Board of Selectmen wants a subs- you know, a significantly different agreement, then.
They don't.
They don't. Our vote doesn't work.
They don't. They, they've got.
So he's saying they're the easy ones, we have.
They've got it, what, they've got what they want, a senior center.
Wow.
So.
You did a good job as closer. You got it done.
Well, I appreciate, I know it was, you know, it was a good process, a tough process, and I think, I, I hope everybody's gonna be happy.
Yeah, it's the first time I've ever really went through that process, so.
Sure the seniors will be very happy.
Yeah, I hope so.
I hope so, yeah. I look forward to using the center myself in a few years.
Yes, we'll all be there eventually, won't we?
Unless they have a satellite office in Florida.
Thank you very much.
That's tropical climate.
Thank you, thanks for coming out.
I'll get you that, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, so now I get to talk about accountability, you know, I'm good at it, I know.
Yeah, out of hand.
And at nine thirty-eight PM, I almost feel like saying, is there a, a special meeting that we can?
We can, we could do that.
To finish the second.
No, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I don't know if I can understand it.
So, come on up and sit down for a minute, girl.
Did we just make them stay for a half an hour to then say?
So, so let's, let's.
They would've stayed anyways, they have a stake in that.
So, would you be comfortable having a meeting after the holidays, like, or first week in January? 'Cause you don't, you remember you have a, you, I don't say you have a month off, 'cause you don't have a month off, because you have subcommittees and things, but there is a month between the meetings, the next week is the fourteenth. So if we wanted, we might be able to schedule something, you know, that first week.
Personally am around, I would rather not be around, but I will be. I would like to go on vacation somewhere, but that's not.
We're so sorry, Pam. No, we're saying when we come back.
No, no, after January.
Yeah, not during vacation.
Oh, okay.
No, no, yeah, no. We're saying like January fourth or after, I think that's when we come back.
We hope you get your wish, Pam.
Yeah.
So is that something we could look at?
What's the matter?
Tom, um, we had a meeting the twenty-eighth.
We're not meeting now on the twenty-eighth with Mike Gilbert, because we do want, yeah, I'm sorry if that wasn't communicated, was it removed off your calendar?
Oh, can we swap this in?
Oh, right.
'Cause I know it was removed off mine, but we do need a hundred percent participation with that. So that's why we didn't, because a member could not make it. So we'll plan it again.
Plans have changed, I have to get my calendar.
Oh, you can now make it? Well, Mike probably can't do this one.
Because of sports, well, because they're afraid to.
Oh.
Can you make, do the meeting there? They're afraid to go away.
Oh.
Oh, the twenty-eighth is during vacation, you don't wanna do that.
So you're gonna be home on the twenty-eighth?
I think Mike's already made a different arrangement, right, for.
So should we, I mean, if that night is available for anyone, should we?
Well, like, she's thinking that Mike Gilbert, oh.
If Mike is.
No, no, leave Mike out, but.
For the meeting, well, I don't know if I wanna have a special school committee meeting on break.
What day, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's hard.
Because like Pam doesn't wanna go away for.
It's been hard for these guys too.
But we're not, I'm not going to, we're not going to.
That's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, let's not do that, I don't wanna impose on anybody's vacation.
Well, actually, you know what, it does make it two weeks in a row, but is there something that people have the week of January fourth?
I, I have the availability.
No, 'cause we're back, are we back to school then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so Monday night, Tuesday night works, actually, that week is pretty quiet for me, actually. Deca, Ju- Ju- Deca's the seventh.
They're the seven. I could do any, what can anybody do, uh, Monday or Tuesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday?
But I know, can you guys do that night? It's preferable.
Great.
Is there a Wednesday, it's fine.
Good. Wednesday?
Wednesday, the, the sixth?
Wednesday would be better.
That work for everybody?
Uh-huh.
Okay, let's put it in, let's book it.
Yeah. And that, for you ladies, that's, you're available that night?
So that's
Mm-hmm, at what time?
Uh, we'll probably do the seven.
This is um Seven?
Just have to make sure this room is available, because it should definitely be televised.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's something, that's maybe a problem.
Wednesday, January sixth.
What is it?
It, it is available, great.
Oh, it is?
Laura's saying, yep.
How do you know that, Laura? That's amazing.
January sixth.
She's on this calendar.
Oh, oh, she's got a master.
Oh, I didn't know she had a master, I thought she had to call it.
All right, so let's do that, so, we'll, do, so do you wanna, um, The only thing is, I'm not sure, we, we may have to, we'll have to get an extension for our little Park versus MCAS decision, unless you're doing that tonight. I mean, I kinda got the impression that I thought I knew where people were going with this.
I know what, I know what my decision is, I don't know what, I haven't obviously spoken to anybody else, so I don't know how long that would take.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't know, it's
We definitely have to do the financial.
You gotta pay some invoices.
Tonight.
Yeah, that won't take long.
Do, do people, do, after reading the information and thinking about it on your own, do people need a lot of discussion on the Park, MCAS?
Yeah.
Do you think?
I don't think I do.
Because if we could do
It might though, if, if, if
Yeah, depends how people are voting.
Well, well, let's just do, I, well, I think I know where the votes are going, you can just do a little straw poll here.
We can do a roll call, and we do Straw polls, right.
Um, can I, before we do, can I just get your opinion of it? I, I just wanna hear because
Yeah, I was gonna tell you what the teachers had said, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Personally, I would lean toward Park.
Because?
Because, because regardless if we do MCAS or Park, we have to embed Park-type questions into the, the assessment. That's going to be new for teachers.
Right.
And so
With paper and pencil, because that would be familiar.
Paper and pencil, right.
Right.
Well, yes, we did Parker probably paper and pencil.
Yes, and, and it would be no Why can't I remember that term?
Hold on, no, hold harmless.
Hold harmless.
So you still, we get the results, they give it that often.
We don't really just read that often. Exactly, it's still, okay, and what would that do to the, the level?
Level three. Well, well, that's what hold harmless means, so they, if you're in level three now, you'd stay in level three unless you improve significantly, and I think they said to me that you can go up, but you don't go down.
Oh.
But we have a lot of NCAS data.
We do have a lot of NCAS.
And we know, like, are we with accountability status?
Yes.
Are we throwing away a lot of data to take a new assessment? And, like, can we, can we, can, can we convert our numbers, our data from NCAS to Park to know enough what we need to do to improve, you know, and not just cause we're on accountability, but like, are we able to translate that well enough to be able to do everything that we've talked about doing, from the data perspective?
I think the answer is yes and no. So they did a crosswalk, so they feel like statistically, if they were to get, if we were to do Park and we were to get information back in the spring, or whenever it's summer, they've said that that, that equates, they figured out a way to make it equate. Right? So, we'd get the results back. What you won't get, what Park districts have been disappointed in, is you don't get all the back stuff.
Is the Which that sounds like the needy, good stuff that we need, if I'm
You don't, it's, you don't get the, this is the item analysis that's at this level of detail.
And, and just to be clear, you didn't ask my colleague, cause I'm not sure, she
Oh, no, 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 we're gonna all weigh in, we're gonna all weigh in, we're gonna all weigh in.
She's being very polite right now.
You've really never asked her?
No, no.
No, we didn't ask her.
No, we, we, we're on our time, we've had this conversation many times, we, we can
We, we just, we discuss this, because
I'm sure.
Like, so many things, we don't know what the future will, will hold, and so, we, we are always on the same page of where we wanna go, but just how we get there, we,
Right, that's hard.
you know, we have the discussion.
For different reasons.
For, for different reasons. I mean, I do feel that, even if we stay with MCAS, the, the Park is new, and so, teachers have to learn that, but I would rather learn it with a little security, rather than learn it knowing that March is going to come in three very short months. Those questions are going to be on the MCAS, and then, you know, we're going into it feeling that we have to immediately make some changes because of our status, and now we're adding that pressure to it as well. So that's, we're, we're having
Say it, say it again, I'm sorry.
We're, we, because of our status, we are going to be implementing changes.
Right.
That's, that's one of the things we read, that, you know, you have to, changes have to be visible, you can't just do the same thing, you know, we're going to be implementing change. Not, not so drastic that, again, it's more stress on teachers and students, but enough that we're trying to, um, create change in the results. But we also know that Park is new, so, and we don't have experience, we, we see what they are, but teachers haven't embedded that in their curriculum.
Right.
So I guess I'm not understa- it sounds like we're, we're trying to avoid the stress by making radical changes, which I get, but at the same time, doing Park,
Right.
which is stressful because it's a radical change.
But, but they, it's, but the, if we do MCAS, there are going to be Park-like questions on it?
But not as many though, Margaret, that's, I, I did some more research on that today, and that's, cause I, I, you know, I see both sides. Last year, I was really pretty firm that my recommendation to you, and we all agreed, administrative team was pretty unified in this, stay with Park, stay with MCAS. This is a little grayer, because the, the future does look like it's more Park-like than MCAS-like. However, when I talked to this guy today, I said to him, I just don't wanna drop to level four if our special ed population doesn't improve significant, he said that, I, that's not gonna happen. You know, it's not gonna happen, you know, but you might stay at level three.
But I wouldn't wanna go to Park just because we're being held up.
Exactly, of course, I, we would never recommend that.
But not just for, my, my point is just to give teachers ex- experience with, with using.
Absolutely. Right. Cause what I'm, and what I'm, what I'm a little worried about, well, what I'm, I think it's probably more inevitable, not, but what I'm worried about
Gives us time. It's inevitable.
is I would have been advocating for Park if I wasn't, if I, before, we were really aware of the level three status. Because to me, the energy that we have, and listening to the staff the other day, and just looking at how much time it takes to look at the data and to formulate the action plans and take the action, that is a huge amount, that requires a huge amount of focus. And I am worried that if we add the Park, and now we, now we have teachers feeling like, in a few short months, we've gotta sort of adjust our instruction, we're gonna have to adjust the instruction, there's no doubt, but we aren't gonna be, so we're gonna get through this year, and then the next two years are hold harmless, so we, we now, we've already trained our teachers in the standards. What we have to train our teachers are, in just like we had to train a five paragraph essay, and a, how do you do a good long comp, and how do you answer an open response question, now we have to do, how do you do a literary, literary analysis, and what does a good essay look like? Those, those are really the things that our teachers need to have practice with. We can work on that as time goes on. I think the worry I have is that, I, I don't, I, we heard the teachers the other day, you know, not everybody spoke, but I got the impression from the head nods and, and Joe Patella got up and his recommendation or his worry was, this is probably something that's too much for us to take on right now with other things, if it's not gonna benefit us significantly. That's why I did the little pros and cons thing, to try to say, what, what objectively, what objectively are the arguments?
I like that.
A very good poll.
I'm sure there are others that we could add to it, but that, that's what, those were the things that were on the table.
Yes.
And then, so, so that would be my, my first concern, is that it's one, and then Julie and Peter sent me stu- or Peter sent me stuff from his department heads saying that they were very concerned about moving to Park at this point, when, you know, the MCAS data was available to us, and adjustments were already being made to the curriculum, but they didn't, they didn't feel that going to Park right now was what, what they would recommend, and Peter supported that as well. So, I, I guess, you know, it's a six, you know, it's, it's not an easy decision, but I just, I'm worried about the capacity to do those two things. I don't, I'm worried about the capacity to do those two things well at the same time. That level three status is something that we really have to focus our energy on.
And is, is that what you, so, knowing that the level three status is, was that sort of embedded into your pros and cons?
For me, it, it, it was when I made the decision, in my mind, you know, if you asked me for my recommendation, I would probably say stay with MCAS at this point. I was a little surprised with the data I showed you from the different districts that were MCAS. I honestly believed that most were gonna vote, that's why it was interesting that they gave the reason for it, which is a lot of what we're talking about right now. So I was worried really about, I'm just worried about where is our, where can we put our energy best? And I, I'm, I think there's familiarity with the test, even though as Margaret's pointing out correctly, there will be some changes. But the majority of the tests, based on what the D E S E is saying to me, is MCAS. So, if we're trying to lose, lessen the stress on teachers and students, at least in this first year, and, 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 and put their energy toward, let's look at that subgroup and let's make sure we can really dig in and figure out what to do about that. I'd probably go in that direction.
Mm.
Although I totally respect Margaret's opinion, and I get why she's recommending that.
And Julie?
Well, um, I've been, I sit in a different perspective, I think, than, than most people, because I've been on an MCAS development committee. So I know the process with which the department uses to create a valid and reliable test structure. So it's, it's quite elaborate, and it takes three years to create a question that's valid and reliable. And you may not even see it on a test for four or five years, you know, like, that's the cycling process of all of that, so I look at it from a different perspective, I'm always thinking about validity and reliability, and how do we do this, and and so I know I've been able to count on that for twenty years, I mean, I've been doing this for twenty years, looking at that kind of structure. So for me, yeah, it will be a shift, but I'll learn it if I have to, and I think other people will too. It's just, the question for me is, what's best for the teachers and the kids right now, obviously. Um, and then, you know, the, the other side of it is, this is a political situation. It's not educational anymore, in my mind, so it's become this kind of big philosophy question, you know, that's, that's taken it out of the, out of the conversation that it originally existed in, so there are a lot of different aspects to this. Um, and so I think that if the commissioner is expecting to create a new assessment that's going to look like Park, but be called MCAS two point O, I have to think about that, you know? And then at the same time, I have to think about where are we right now, and, and how can, how can we make sure that we're doing, um, what we wanna do, and, and, and how do we ensure that we can see the growth within that? So those, those, I really am torn in that sense, I don't wanna put anyone at a disadvantage, but at the same time, I don't wanna jump, you know, in that sense too quickly.
Have you seen the Park from, so you've seen it, so
Mm-hmm. Well, we, we saw it in the, when they did the field test.
Okay.
We field tested Park, we did.
Right, that's what I thought.
We were, we were told
We're actually looking at the question.
That we were field testing Park, so it wasn't
Yes, and it was just one grade, right?
We did fourth grade, fourth grade, and we did the high school Algebra II.
And how did that?
The Algebra II was pretty interesting, uh, but again, it was kind of on the heels of getting ready for MCAS, so these kids, they were, there was so much going on. It wasn't an easy, an easy thing to do for anybody, because we were told we were gonna do it, we were told the dates, and we had to upload all the student names and make it happen, it wasn't by choice.
And I mean, the question, were the questions like apples to apples, were they, you know?
The questions are definitely different.
They're different.
Uh, there's no question about it.
So it's more analytical, I believe.
That's right, it is more analytical.
It's like when you've been looking at the way, i- i- it's kind of like you know what you know, right? So you know what you know, and you know how to think about it, because you've been doing it in the classroom for X amount of years. And now you're looking at it, and you're layering in a lot of other pieces as well, so you're not only looking at one piece of text and analyzing it and writing about it with four different questions and open response, you're looking at two or three different pieces of text, synthesizing it. Not that that's bad either, it certainly isn't, so it's, it's really about, you know
But they're doing that in teaching anyhow.
They are, they, I, I mean, our teachers are doing amazing things, so, I mean, I feel like, I feel like it's really a question of where are we right now? Where are we today, what's the best decision for today? And then we have to kind of think about the future at the same time, so that's why I say it's a hard decision.
I don't think we, I don't think it would be accurate to say that the teachers are, are completely unprepared to have children take Park.
Right.
But I think it would, because I, we've aligned to the standards, and so if you're teaching the standards, no matter what test you're giving, you should be able to, kids should be able to do okay. The challenge will be that there are some different kind of questions that we haven't had a chance to embed in our instruction yet. So we, our kids know how to write a long composition, our kids know how to write, answer an open response question.
Right.
Our kids know how to, 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 to do the MCAS kind of stuff, but they, they, when they come up against something like doing a literary analysis in the third grade
Between fiction and nonfiction.
Comparing and identifying the
Taking on a point, and taking on a point of view.
And, and the other thing is, they do, they do expect is that you read on grade level.
Not a point of view of someone else.
So, you're looking at kids in the subgroup. Right, so, you know, so our job is to take them where they are reading, ask them those same kind of questions in whatever it is they're reading, and then continue to move their text level up. Right? So, that's the stuff we're talking about, like, how are we actually making adjustments to instruction, but there are going to be a number of things teachers are gonna have to wrap their heads around, and, and so, we don't want them to think as, okay, now all the things you're doing now, you have to do something completely different and new, and then at the same time, worry about the subgroup of kids. I think it's a timing issue. But, you know, that's, it, like I said, the level three status changed it for me, otherwise my recommendation would be, hey, what's the, what, what do you have to lose going with Park? You get three years of a chance to see the test, you know, adjust to the test.
Right, that is, Margaret's absolutely right.
I'm just worried Margaret has great points, there's no question about it, I completely understand what it
Yeah, it's perfect, and the only difference for me, cause I was right, I, we had this conversation, I was
Right.
The issue really for me is the level two sta- the level three status, and what's that gonna take? And how are we gonna invest our time and energy?
And, but in here, again, your, your pros are, is that you hold harmless accountable for the next two years.
Yeah, that is a, that is a pro, i- if that's important to you, as Barbie said, that can't be your, that shouldn't be your driver.
No, it's not the driving force.
So I do think that's a pro, but not for me.
Like, like, it's a pro, it's a pro, but it's a no, no brainer that it's a pro, but, yeah.
Right, it's a pro, sure, it's not weighing heavily for you.
It's not weighing on your mind.
It's, right, that wouldn't be
Right.
But what I'm looking at is how we're gonna dig ourselves out of the hole with these numbers, so
But I don't think the hole is because the kids won't be prepared for Park, I think the hole is because we have kids that, that are still struggling to master the standards.
Just with MCAS.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's, that's our biggest
And so those are the ones that are most familiar with MCAS.
That's right.
Right.
Well, and I think it's very hard to give teachers and the kids three months to make these changes and feel good about it, and have the kids, I, we want to put our kids in a situation that they're walking into something feeling confident.
Confident.
And I wouldn't wanna compromise that, um, for the teachers or the kids. I think that subgroup in particular, I, all kids, but all of a sudden, you've been writing in a certain way, and then all of a sudden, oh, put that aside for now, and now when you, now the questions look like this, and especially for that subgroup who it's challenging for them anyway to have thirty months, or, you know, give or take, I think
It is only three months, isn't it?
Which, that's the thing I
Well, the, the board voted very late on it, the board voted very late.
I, i- if we were voting in June for the next school year, I would say, let's try it, but I, I don't think I don't think it's, it's going to be a good situation for the teachers or for the kids, and, you know, I think I think our level three status, the focus, as Carol said, and I know you've been working on this, and the teachers, I think, um, you know, that's, that's a big undertaking, and, you know, we know the work that has to be done. I would rather see focus on that change versus throwing this really quick change, is the way I see it.
Okay, so with all that being said, we're having a meeting in January.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we in a position to vote tonight, or are we in a position to ask for an extension and put that on the agenda for the January sixth, twenty sixteen meeting?
Yep.
That's the question.
I guess my only thought there is, is if we do wind up going to Park, now we're at two and a half months, I mean, that, that just, I'm not that, that, there's not much school between now and then, but
Yeah, but it really, yeah, there's not much school, it's not that we would be changing it.
But it is teachers having the opportunity to.
But it's a message.
I, I agree, I think if you can vote to vote, because we, we did have to change our testing schedule anyway, but I've delayed putting it out there because, you know, I just need to know.
Well, I'm in a position to vote, I don't know who else.
I can vote, I am.
Could you vote tonight?
I'm like struggling, but.
I should vote. Okay. So, um, I don't know if I wrote a motion for that, because I didn't know which way you were going, oh, maybe I did, no, no, I think it's, so.
It was tough. Well, that is a, yeah, it is tough, I agree.
Pros and cons on both sides.
I will make a motion to, um, have the Georgetown School District stay with MCAS for the, um, upcoming testing dates.
Two thousand sixteen, sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, fifteen, sixteen.
No, actually, it'd be sixteen, right?
Yeah, just for, yeah.
Twenty sixteen. Second.
So moved. Discussion?
Well, Barbie made the motion, and Pam seconded it.
She seconded it.
Now you're gonna vote.
So no discussion?
Oh, unless there's discussion.
Unless, okay, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, so, okay, so we had four ayes, um. Do you wanna abstain, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's, we'll stand, okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll communicate that to the teachers, and I'll communicate it to the Department of Education.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So you wanna do the financial?
What I would like to do is just do the financial and then end the meeting.
Yep, so then we'll continue.
And we can do our subcommittee reports, and the Baker Adams.
And the acceptance.
And the acceptance.
Are we gonna talk about the accountability stuff at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was.
That will be the primary.
Yes.
You need to vote on Baker Adams tonight.
Oh, cause they have a meeting?
Yep.
Okay, so we are having a.
That'd be easy, that, that shouldn't take a lot.
That's a simple. Cause we've already discussed it, we almost like should've voted before.
Yeah, we could have.
Yeah.
Um, so, the chair, the chair will make a motion to create a Baker Adams Subcommittee um, with Pam Lundquist and Michael Hinchliffe as serving members on the Subcommittee.
So moved.
So. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for doing that, we'll look forward to that, and what we come up with. Okay, so on the financial, um, report, we do have some items that need to, let me just get to. I'm all.
There we go, too many papers tonight.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi.
Thank you.
So we have, we have to transfer some money.
Yes.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve line item transfer, number one oh five, dated twelve nine twenty fifteen, in the amount of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents, as presented.
So moved.
Can I stop there, Julie?
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, we have a invoice from CBI.
It's two invoices, one's from Meadows Construction. And one's from CBI Consulting.
Okay, so that's the next one, okay. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve payment of CBI Consultant Inc. invoice number two four one two one, dated November twenty-third, twenty fifteen, in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, as presented. So.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then I will make a motion to approve payment of Meadows Construction invoice number four, dated November twenty.
Twelve three.
Oh, I'm looking at, oh, this is, dated, uh, December third, twenty fifteen, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, as presented.
So moved.
Good.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it, for that, here's the.
Okay.
Should we, should we accept this?
They're gonna accept the donation.
Laura.
Yeah. Do you wanna do that? Um, so, were these two separate? I was looking at that, okay, cause I was, so this was for marching in the band, marching in the Haverel Parade?
Yes, they purchased the sand.
That was, that, yeah, that, that is very generous, I, I remembered there was, there was a monetary.
Yes.
Um, donation given, I wasn't aware that it was that much money, but that is very generous, and it's always such a beautiful parade, a lot of people go to that. Um, so, uh, I will make a motion to accept the one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Haverel VFW, post number twenty-nine for the Georgetown Middle High School Band, with sincere as gratitude, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then to make a motion to accept, uh, one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Merrimack Santa Parade Committee for the Georgetown Middle High School Band, with gratitude as presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very nice, that's, I'm sure the band, um, sure, Mr. Messina will definitely use that.
They definitely will.
Um, then we have an anonymous donation of one thousand dollars to be used, um, in the drama program.
Nice.
That is a very generous, um, donation, that's, that's a very generous donation, so I will make a motion to accept the anonymous one thousand dot, donation for the Drama Club with gratitude as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's very nice, that was a lot of money that we received tonight, um, so we appreciate that, and I know that it's going to be put to good use.
Starby, should we keep these out separate for the next meeting?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna do the accountability stuff and the Subcommittee.
I would love to have the, re, the, um, first page that was in the packet, all the things that attached to that, that she was gonna show us tonight.
Oh, yes, we'll definitely have those, oh, yeah.
So I'd like, but prior to, we can have that printed out and take a look at that.
Absolutely, absolutely, and actually, Julie will project them at, at the meeting too, but yes, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, good.
But do you just, do, do we have to approve the, um, the Baker Adams thing?
We do.
We did.
You, you approved it, you said yes.
You voted aye.
He says yes, Cheryl.
You want to, otherwise you would've got the job.
It's ten, it's ten oh seven, believe me, we did.
So hot in here.
It is, okay, so there is no, um, need for an executive session this evening, so I do want to close the meeting with wishing everybody a very happy holiday. I hope everyone has a safe winter, hot, winter vacation, I hope they enjoy their time with their family and friends.
Absolutely.
Um, so with that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten oh eight PM.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, good night.
Right, thank you.